Mark, is your webcam off?
Yes, it is off. Because I'm not presenting.
Did you say he's?
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Trusty Carr, you need to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't know. I've got you on a computer and I've got you on an iPad. So I don't know which one you guys are hearing or seeing.
All right.
Okay. Are we ready?
I'm, I believe so. Try, we'll go and see what happens. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for being here. Nice to see you all and I hope that you all are well. Due to the circumstances of the COVID-19 pandemic and pursuant to Governor Presskurs Executive Order 2020-07 issued on March 16th, 2020, suspending the Open Meetings Act provisions relating to in-person attendance by members of a public body, the August 24th, 2020 Board of Trustees, Chicago State University's Board of Trustees, being conducted virtually and is hereby called to order. Ms. Phillips, will you please call the role?
Trusty Carr?
Present.
Trusty Clay?
Present.
Trusty Snyder? Trusty Snyder?
He's here.
Trusty McGade?
Present.
Trusty's out.
Present. A warrant exists for the business of the board to begin. Ms. Phillips, will you certify that the notice of this meeting has been given pursuant to the requirement of the Open Meetings Act?
Yes, Chair. The meeting only requirement has been met. Noticeance were posted 48 hours before this meeting.
All right, then I just need to get an approval for the agenda. If there are no comments or corrections to the agenda, can I just ask that all in favor, please say, of approving the agenda, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, guys have it. This time we will hear public and employee comments. The board will not hear presentations or entertain questions on the following topics. Issues of negotiation. Are the university's collective bargaining process, statements concerning the private activities, lifestyle, or beliefs of individuals employed or associated with the university, grievances of individuals, students, or employees, or any personnel matters? Ms. Phillips, if there are any who signed up for public comment, can you please call their name?
No one signed up for public comment.
All right. Then, we do have a couple of action items on the agenda. The first is an Advocate Health contract to run the health center. And a resolution with that. Dr. Roundtree, can you please present on that contract?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay, great. Pursuant to the bylaws, we'd like to present a contract that exceeds the amount of $250,000 for consideration. It is a one-year contract with Advocate Health and Hospital Corporation, doing business as advocate at work, for the amount not to exceed $260,000 in order to provide services for both students and employees in terms of health services, as well as offering our CSU campus some wellness and public health education. This would be an annual contract with options for renewal. I believe you received the synopsis of some of this. It offers our basic immunizations and wellness components, but also additional services that would meet the needs of our as well employees.
Are there any questions?
If there are any questions, I'd like to just ask for approval and questions.
Are there any questions for Dr. Roundtree? If not, can I get a motion for approval of the, or do we need to read the resolution? Stephanie, no. So can I, I think everybody has a copy of the resolution. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution, approve the contract for Advocate to run the healthcare center?
All move.
Second?
Second. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? All right, the resolution passed. Next, the next item of action item we have is approval of a union contract, a contract with local Teamsters Local Team, Local Teamsters 700, like the bargaining agreement. Stephanie Kelly's going to present on that briefly. Stephanie, go ahead.
Good morning, Chair and Trustees, President Scott and Provost Roundtree. We have a tentative agreement with the Teamsters Local 700. It is a small union on our campus of approximately 19 employees. There are movers, as well as our groundskeepers and our mail delivery and sorting personnel, which is an interesting combination. Actually, I was advised this morning that the union will not ratify this agreement until August 28th. I can brief you briefly on what our tentative agreement is, but we would have to actually consider this after they ratify it. So I would ask for it to be tabled until the September meeting.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Stephanie while we're here? If not, we'll put it on the agenda for approval in September. But everybody's been briefed on it, I believe. So, any questions? All right, thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you.
We're going to get into the meat of our program for today. And the first is a presentation by Athletic Director Elliot Charles on his vision and goals for the athletic department. And so I would call on him to begin. Good morning, Director Charles, welcome. And the floor is yours. I think you're on mute.
Good morning, Chairs.
There you go.
It's a pleasure to be in front of you, healthy and well. There's a lot that I'd like to speak to you about related to this year. And I'm going to share my screen here. Just make sure I get that in presentation mode. Let's see. Move this over. All right, there we go. All right. So thank you again. We began welcoming back our student athletes for screening and testing and education and also training this week and also earlier this month. In addition to our student athletes, we've welcomed four new coaches to our staff. And it's a pleasure to have them as they've hit the ground running and recruiting great students to join our athletic department. This week, on Thursday, August 27th at 1:00 PM, we'll be hosting a virtual student athlete welcome back. And we're really excited about the energy that we'll be able to deliver in this augmented environment. As we gear up for supporting our student athletes, on a personal note, I've also been gearing up for further support in the house as my wife Stormy and I will be welcoming our third little one into the world in late January, early February, 2021. So very exciting, great to have the prospect of three little cougars running around the house. And I know that our student athletes are also very anxious to get back and join us in our competitive environment. Please note, as an overview, that we have approximately 185 students across our 15 sports. And that we've had some great accolades that we've been able to sustain and also achieve as we've been moving throughout the last several years. Most notably, we've had 116 student athletes post a GPA of 3.0 or better in our last semester, our regular term of spring 2020. And that we've had 27 student athletes earn a perfect 4.0, while 89 earned a GPA between 3.0 or 3.99. I really commend our academic support services group and all the partnerships within academic affairs and all the other individuals across campus that lead and make this feat possible. It's quite an achievement by our students. Also liked, wanted to note that we had 11 teams post GPAs of 3.0 or better, led by men's and women's tennis, who posted the top two team GPAs in the spring 2020 semester with a 3.8 and a 3.76 respectively. This is the second consecutive semester that the tennis squads have posted the top departmental GPAs. Also notably, we've had Cougars succeed individually with great accolades throughout campus. And we had 29 student athletes earn those accolades from across campus, including dual-sport student athlete. That's volleyball and also women's basketball, and Alexandra Cliff, who graduated last year, earning the 2020 President's Cup. Chicago State student athletes were also represented on the Dean's List, Provost Honorable, President's Honorable, and the University Honorable. According to our records, that is eight consecutive semesters with an average GPA of 3.0 or better across all sports. Now quickly, zooming out into the governance structure of the NCA, and to give a better frame of who we are, Chicago State Athletics within the NCA. The NCA Division One model includes a governance structure that offers a competitive and scholarship-based experience for 350 members across Division One. The NCA Board of Governors manages across all three divisions. And as we've most notably seen, the NCA has passed legislation to broaden the scope of the Board of Governors, and most recently adding Grant Hill as an individual member to their board structure. Underneath the substructures of the NCA governance model, we do see that there's focuses on academics through the Committee on Academics, Legislative Committee, D1 Council, and many other subcommittee structures that allow us to address national issues across the board and filter down through our conferences so that we can better support our student athletes here on campus. As part of my background, I've served within NCA compliance and governance for almost the past 14 years, soon to be 15. And I've built a career across several divisions at the NCA level and within the SEC, the Mid-American Conference, the ACC, the Big East, and several others. So one thing I've noted is that we've seen the same type of issues and items of support needed for student athletes across all divisions. And so the work that happens at the national level is extremely important in helping to move each one of our institutions forward. Conferences serve as a facilitator of NCA and conference revenue distribution to its members. They provide championship structure for access to NCA championship competition and provide service to member institutions. As examples, officiating the kind of conference tournaments, supporting NCA governance and legislative structure, competitive statistics and records, and also provides recognition programs to our students. Notably, we're part of the Western Athletic Conference, and we have been since 2013. And we are a non-football, NCA Division One multi-sport member, which makes us quite unique as we look at the landscape of Division One athletics. What you're looking at there is a quick diagram picture of where we are located within our conference and a listing of our members. Our membership recently changed with the addition of Dixie State University and more recently, Tarleton State to our membership. Currently, as we look to move forward and evaluate what our strategic planning goals will be within the athletic department, matching up with the university's strategic plan that was issued in December 2019, we're looking to evaluate all options to best serve our student athletes in our local community.
Can I just ask with respect to the conference? So I mean, we're at a conference that is predominantly the Western United States. I mean, is there not a kind of more Midwest-based conference that wouldn't have our student athletes flying to California and Utah and places like this?
Thanks, Trusty Snyder. That's a great question. I would say yes, there are several conferences that could offer a more regional opportunity to support our student athlete class attendance and travel days and also competitiveness. When we look at it, they're approximately two to three. When we look at their goals and where those conference memberships are, I think that, you know, there's some work that needs to be, continue to be done to make sure that we present ourselves as an institution that's in alignment. And so we are talking to several conferences and have been. And I think there's a potential opportunity for us to continue looking at some regional options for Division One play.
So, Director Charles, can you get slightly more specific? So let me just ask a couple of questions. One is, are we, what is entailed in moving? Is that something that we're seriously considering? And if so, what would be the timeframe?
Sure. And so a couple of the regional conference options that are available are the likes of the Horizon League and the Ohio Valley Conference. Part of that, looking at joining a new league in addition to leaving the current one, we've evaluated a year, kind of like a year timeline that it takes essentially to move. There's a new membership committee that has to take a look at what we have to offer. And there's a year-long timeline. So looking at potentially August of 2021 as the first potential opportunity to join a new league. And I hope that that answers the scope of the questions. I think there's just a whole lot that has to happen between touching base with all of the member institutions and really understanding the goals as the OVC has football and the Horizon League does not.
I'd like to add to Elliot's statement. First of all, there are fees associated with exiting a conference. If we were to exit the WAC, it would cost us an exit fee. And there are entrance fees for entering new conferences. As a board member of the WAC, I know that some conferences will help. When we are trying to attract new members to the WAC, we will help them with, sometimes help with exit and entrance fees. But the fee structure is, it can be rather expensive. And sometimes a conference will help you exit in order to join the new conference.
In addition to President Scott's comments, I would say the one thing that I left off the table is that when we look at a conference like the Ohio Valley Conference, we also see a substantial reduction in the annual membership dues. And so right now in the WAC, we pay in excess of $100,000, it's about $115,000 annually. And in the Ohio Valley Conference, their current membership dues are set at about $40,000 annually.
Does it have any significance to the athletes themselves? In other words, does it matter to them whether we're in the WAC or we're in the Ohio Valley because of the nature of the other teams that we're playing? Or, so I mean, is that going to affect recruiting or not?
I think we're hearing from the student athletes that they want more of an opportunity to be here and compete locally. When we look at some of our student athletes being in the WAC, we do have students that are from the West Coast. So they do appreciate being able to play against their families occasionally on the road. But then when we look at the majority of our students and where they're coming from, competing more regionally could have a net benefit to them. And obviously, the travel piece of being able to be more invested in class time, you know, where you are locally was a major priority and concern of the student athletes and their families in the past. With this changed environment, obviously, that brings some nuance and different approach to us. But at the end of the day, we are hearing that the student athletes and those prospective students that want to come here would love to have more opportunity to compete regionally.
So then my last question is, what's the timing on making a decision or doing what we're doing? So I'm not a big fan of kind of thinking about it and not trying to move on it. So if it's something we're going to do, you know, when will we know? And when will we at least have some assessment of costs? To the President Scott's point of either getting in, getting out versus travel, when will that be done? And when will we know what you're recommending?
So we'll know by October. We'll know by October what the potential costs are. And we'll also have a better idea of what those member institutions in both the Horizon League and/or Ohio Valley Conference have for us as far as feedback for potential membership for the 2021 year.
Perfect, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, so getting back into a little bit of an overview and diving down into some specifics. We do have 15 NCA Division One sport programs, seven men's programs and eight women's, just to be clear. And then part of the reason why we have those 15 programs is because for NCA Division One non-football bowl subdivision school, we're required to have a minimum of 14 sponsored sports, and that's two-team sports per gender. And so the permitted models are seven men's and seven-woman sports, or to have six men's and eight-woman sports. Notably, we have a change in our sports sponsorship. For this year, we began sponsoring the sport of men's soccer as an independent member within the Western Athletic Conference. And we no longer sponsor the sport of baseball. Also notably, there was one scholarship student that re-enrolled for fall 2020. And we had approximately 22 to 23 scholarship students as we finish out enrollment here for the fall that did not re-enroll here at CSH for the year and transferred to other institutions. When we look at our organization and how we operate as Chicago State Department of Intercollegiate Athletics, we have several areas, overarching areas, and they're listed above. Academic support and student services being paramount for us all the way through external operations. But to clarify what some of our other areas are, as we get into the nuance of athletics, we have sports performance, which includes strength and conditioning, nutrition, and sports psychology. Business operations, which we've currently refined down to facility services, event operations, equipment operations, and transportation. And then external operations, which is a budding area for us, one that we're looking to grow, that includes athletic communications, creative services, video production, marketing, and corporate sponsorships. Lastly, within our structure, we also have an administrative group of sports supervisors that lend strategic and day-to-day support to all of our head coaches and student athletes. Notably in our picture, one of our student athletes that we're extremely proud of, in addition to Alexandra Cliff, is Meg Claveter, who served as both our Vice President and National Student Athlete Advisory Committee Representative, and also through the West North Athletic Conferences, our conference representative, who received the NCA 2020 Accelerating Academic Success Program Student Athlete Career Development Award. Just to highlight what this award is about, this award honors two individuals each year who plan to pursue a career in athletics and who have satisfied additional award criteria, including being from an AASP eligible school, which we are, is Chicago State, and being a sophomore or higher, and having a cum GPA of 2.8 or higher and being eligible. And so Meg has been an extremely active student throughout this program, and we're extremely proud of what she's brought. She continues to serve CSU Athletics and has volunteered in many capacities throughout our administration. Next up, and this is a great picture of Alex Cliff, our 2020 President's Cup honoree. As an overview of our staff that supports those areas, we have 36 total staff, which includes 19 coaches and 17 administrators. The 17 administrators are the ones who essentially pull off the 15 administrative areas, the functions within them for all of our student athletes. Please note again, we have 15 sport programs. And it's, you know, the coaches do a phenomenal job in making sure to fill in the gaps where we need help to provide any services to our students. So I commend everybody for all that's being done within the building. So as we dive down more into a specific part about what we're doing here and what we're attempting to do moving forward is our financial overview. As you can see, our budget, our expense history has fluctuated from FY15 through FY20, and as we are now in FY21. For FY20, the Department of Intercollegiate Athletic Competition and Travel was suspended in April 2020, along with some controls put in place on all of our fiscal operation due to cancellation of NCA competition and WAC conference competition. FY20 represents three-fourths of the projected operational expenses that we would have had during the FY20 year. FY2021 projected expenses are reduced, we're looking at a reduction is the better way to say it, due to cancellation of competitions for fall sports. Most recently, here over the last two weeks, we had the Western Athletic Conference and NCA suspend ball championships for the likes of volleyball, cross-country, and soccer. As we look at the breakdown of the FY21 operating budget, you can see here that our largest expenditure is scholarships. In addition to those scholarships, we have personal services, which is salaries and wages, and contractual services that are the primary, the biggest chunks of our operating budget as we pull off all that we do to support our almost 200 student athletes. Potential reduction in revenue and expenses, if additional sports seasons are suspended for 2021, will result in expense reduction overall of $118,400. And the way we're looking at it is, the categories outside of contractual expenses would be observed to cover the net loss if we had to find additional monies to cover that $118,000. To break it down and to be very clear, though, as we look at our expenses for those fall sports that were suspended by the NCA and the WAC, $180,000 approximately is the expense reduction that we would observe. Right now, men's and women's basketball is in limbo as we don't have a national decision or local decision from the conference on what we're going to be doing as far as basketball. We're going to be hearing about several models related to the timing of start and/or structure of competition here in mid-September and early October. If basketball were to be suspended along with fall sports, we'd be looking at a total of about close to $800,000 in expense reduction that would take place for the year. Overall, with fall sports and basketball, that expense reduction of almost $800,000 would be about 11.21% of our overall operating budget for FY21. Notably, with expense reduction and freezing of some of those contractual services in other areas, we'd also be looking at loss of revenue. Right now, within our revenue model for the FY21 year, we had a projection of gain guarantee revenue at about $841,000, which is about 29% of our overall revenue. And we also had ticket sales projected at $75,000, which is about 2.6% of our overall operating revenue. So notably, going back to that beginning, when we look at those revenues and those expenses, there's an additional $118,000 that would be left as expense for the year when we look at fall sports and basketball. And we have some fiscal controls in place across the other budgetary categories through which we can have an offset to cover that 118.
Can I just ask on the budget before we move from that? So the 185 students that participate in athletics, so let's just go back a slide if we could. So if it's $7 million, is $7 million, of which 39% is scholarship, divided by 185 students, is about 14,000 to 15,000 a student. So is basically, is every student of those 185, are they basically all scholarship? So is basically is every student of those 185, are they basically all scholarship students? Like of the 185, how many are getting scholarship support?
Of the 185, we have approximately 130-ish. We always have anywhere between, and we're still enrolling and admitting students, but we always have anywhere between 35 to 50-plus that remain non-scholarship on our squads. And so the number, the number's fluctuating right now, but as we look at it, we have right around sub 130 students that tend to be scholarship student athletes within the department.
And then, you know, maybe this is for Andrea, and then of the undergraduate kind of population that would be eligible for athletics that are kind of more in traditional students, in other words, not the kind of 30-year-old average who's, you know, doing this part-time. What's that universe? I'm just trying to give a sense, like what percentage of kind of, if you think of the students as they're kind of students who are in their kind of normal late teens, early twenties enrolled full-time versus those who are unconventional, working part-time, et cetera, enrolled at the university? Like what percentage of that first bucket are in athletics? It sounds like it's a pretty high percentage.
I think that's information we can get for you. I think that's a great metric that we can look at as well. But I don't have that data today, looking at what percentage of our overall student body is the traditional in comparison to our, you know, 17 to 21-year-old, 22-year-old. So that would be a great follow-up point if you allow, and I'll get that, I can get that information to you.
But the undergraduate enrollment is is what?
The right sub 2000, I believe. And so we're about 10%.
Andrea is on, Dr. Welch is on the on the call right now. And Dr. Welch is our new VP of Enrollment Management. Dr. Welch, if you look at our traditionally, what percentage of our enrollment is undergraduate?
Undergraduate enrollment, from what I'm learning, since I've been here three weeks, I'm still diving into this data. But they are roughly, I would say, 60 to 70% of our student population typically. I know right now we have around 1,300. So and it's fluctuating, so especially for this year because of COVID-related issues. I feel like some of these decisions students are making later in the year. And so, and we will get into some of that data actually in our enrollment management presentation concerning scholarships. And I know our Director of Financial Aid will be on to present that. So I think that we can provide, you know, a more broad picture for you in regards to that.
Thanks. I would just note, so Dr. Welch, just as you probably, you may not have the exact answer to trustee Schneider's question right now, but as you're going through, if you don't have it today, you could just make a note to get it. So the answer is, first of all, what percentage of our student population are what we would call traditional students? You know, average age, 17 to 24, 25, full-time students? And then what proportion of those are athletic scholars or involved in athletics? If we have that. So once we know the first bucket, we can answer the second bucket, but you might not have that today, and that's fine. Is that right, Mark? Did that get your?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to think like bigger picture. We know.
I got you.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think bigger picture about kind of the role of athletics and an institution that serves different populations of students. And, you know, you don't really need an athletics program for a college that is predominantly folks who are 30, working full-time jobs and, you know, going to school part-time to kind of advance their careers. Obviously, kind of the more traditional, and I think the air quotes are appropriate there, because what does that even mean today? But, 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 you know, the athletics has a different kind of role for that model. And I think like as we think about the institution and what needs to be done to make kind of the traditional piece robust, you know, athletics has a certain role in that kind of model. And then the sort of non-traditional, part-time, working model is, you know, is kind of a different one. And athletics would play a different role in that sort of institution, I think.
Got it.
Chair, Chair Zapp, LA, can we also break out what those scholarships are like? I know they're not all full-time scholarships. So can you break out what percentage are they half, are they quarter? Because I think a lot of times people assume when you say scholarships that everybody, everything's being paid. And we know that's not the case. So can you break out, you know, who are getting a quarter, who are getting a half? So that it doesn't seem like everybody's on a full scholarship.
Most definitely. Thank you, trustee Carter. All right.
Any other questions at this point? I mean, there'll be time for questions at the end, but if anybody have any right now? If not, then you can continue, Director Charles.
Thank you. All right. So as we look at the Fall 2020 Athletics Operating Plan, especially after covering some of those financial figures, I did want to clarify again that on August 13th, the Western Athletic Conference Board of Directors voted to suspend competition in fall sports. And that the NCAA subsequently came out with a decision last week to suspend ball championships and look at other options for conducting those championships in the future. So there is the potential looming idea of hosting spring championships. But again, as we look at the cost of doing so, and not just Chicago State, but but other institutions, it doesn't seem like it's very feasible at this time. Fall 2020 activity.
Director Charles, can you repeat that, what you just said? Did you just say it's not, we don't have money to do spring sports, or did I misunderstand what you just said?
No, the NCAA is looking into hosting fall championships in the spring. And so that would be combining all sports to take place in the spring. And they're receiving a lot of feedback across conferences across the country, saying that that's not a great financial model for all.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
No worries, no worries. So as we look at Fall 2020 Activity, we began in May as we assembled forces with different entities. So that's the Medical Advisory Committee at the Western Athletic Conference, our team physicians here at Chicago State, along with our Sports Medicine Staff Members here on staff. We formed a medical advisory group that mimicked that of the Western Athletic Conference and of the NCAA, along with the guidance that filtered through the institution from the state of Illinois and also from the CDC. And we started to devise an approach for screening and testing of our student athletes and educating student athletes and staff. And again, all this was done with deference to university communication that came out and reiterated university messages while really trying to have a close and frequent touch with students that were located even abroad. And so Fall 2020 Activity, from a staff operational standpoint, began with in-person rotation of very limited staff, including myself, back in the end of July, July 20 through July 27 and even earlier. But as we addressed the plan, we focused and organized from July 20 to July 27. And we've been creating an operation, you know, under these conditions since that time, the last several weeks. Student screening and testing began on August 4th for those students that arrived in the locale of the institution. And at that time, remember during August 4th, there was still no decision from a national and or conference level on what would happen related to fall sports. And so at this time, we've taken, you know, the advice of all those entities mentioned, and we're continuing to screen and test students. We're also looking at our facilities and some of those services that we wanted to offer to students related to strength and conditioning, nutrition and medical. And at this time, we are, we are still working through having those students back and making sure that they have everything they need. As we get into the month of September and October, we should be in what is a very, operating in a very limited capacity, where coaches are able to virtually and observe via social distance, conditioning and practice activity only. We are not anticipating travel, as though we also wait for the NCAA and the Western Athletic Conference and others to make a decision on basketball. But it's, it's looking like at this point, we won't have any travel activity for the next several months. Last point that's notable to make on basketball, we're hoping, again, we are in tune. You know, I serve on a couple committees, and we also have staff that are very involved in national committees. We're trying to get information, and even locally, with those local directors of athletics here within the state of Illinois and our neighboring states, to really understand what information are coming out of committees and advisory groups related to what is going to happen in basketball. Basketball represents a major part of the operating budget for the NCAA. And, you know, as you can imagine, we're getting information from a lot of different sources, but filtering down to what is important now as we project for basketball operations. We're hoping to get a mid-September update, where we're looking at either modified start, no basketball, or conference bubbles, as we're hearing, which is some sort of regional slash conference-based modified start and structured to basketball for the year. So now we get into the fun part, and this is the part that really gets me energized about being here and serving CSU and our community and students. We were able to codify what we call our championship era vision. And that was important coming in, because we do have a history of success that we want to mimic here into the future. And some of that success was experienced by our women's tennis program in the early 90s. I had the pleasure of speaking with that women's tennis team through our coach, current coach, Jack Barden. And I got to hear about some of those elements that really made us successful back then. And so as we look at how to apply this approach under the university's strategic plan, you know, under the university's strategic goals 1, 2 and 6, it's very, very important that we are able to to spread the university's strategic vision, strategic plan, along with this vision of our championship era and all that it could be within all of our sport programs. So as our coaches are developing their own plans for success, we're asking them to think about the student first. As every action that we're taking, you know, based in academic excellence and really pushing all of those elements of support that helps students matriculate through the university successfully, are we looking at how we're invested with our resources, including time, not just finances? And are we really looking at the long-term growth, growth models for the athletic department within the university structure? And then also innovation, we know resources are limited. So what ways are we reaching to the outside or even internally to develop best use and effective use of our resources within our walls? And so again, not going to read the bullets to you, but going to show you here how we are trying to operationalize that student-first approach. We've had several opportunities already through corporate sponsorships, including the likes of Nike. We are looking at additional grant funding opportunities through the NCAA, along with some association-based grant funding opportunities that we've been able to, you know, attain for the 2020, 21 year. Also looking for opportunities, again, as we talked about Megan Claveter on the earlier slide, of increasing student athlete engagement opportunities with our student athlete advisory committee and also through the existing university service programs. Investment, working with the foundation through partnership with the foundation to come up with a sustainable model for athletics, for an annual membership plan to support student scholarships, a capital campaign to continue to focus on those facility needs that allow us to create spaces to support those students and those critical items that make us better and more competitive. And then finding a way to better archive our athletics history through an athletics Hall of Fame program. All things that can be executed at what is reasonable cost and have been working with Darius and Kevin to really, really focus heavily on execution and the right timing of this program, getting our coaches out into the community. Further, looking at opportunities to really to partner closely with a lot of organizations out there. We receive, we receive a lot of requests for us to find ways to partner with groups out there. And the hope is, through some of this investment plan, this philanthropic giving model, that we're able to create easy avenues to do so in conjunction with the university foundation. Lastly, innovation. And so this one is a more broad-based approach. But again, as we look at how we are going to execute what we do, there's a great opportunity for us to engage community partners and also just take a look at our approach and to think about ways outside of the box to just think differently about who we are, CSU Athletics, and supporting our Division One student athletes. So the fun part, here's what we plan to do, or how we plan to measure success for this year. We want to continue to create that ninth and 10th consecutive term of maintaining student athlete GPA performance at 3.0 or higher for the fall and spring. We want to look at new career in leadership planning through partnership with the existing areas at the university. And so for the 2021 academic year, we announced Cougars Lead, which is a seminar-based program where we at least are going to try to provide resources on a monthly basis, speakers, webinars to students. It's going to be a very concerted effort through engagement with the sport programs, since we do have this augmented environment where we want to continue to support the students. And so there'll be a full range of programming. And there's a program overview that really highlights some of those ideas that came through our student athlete advisory committee, of the things that they would like to see to help them and help us better engage with the students and their needs for this year. While it seems like a daunting task to hit revenue targets, especially with the uncertainty of the pandemic and also with the NCAA when it comes to basketball operation, we still want to focus on meeting at a minimum 60% of revenue targets across all revenue categories. I think there's a major opportunity as we talk to those that want to support the launch of a giving campaign as far as annual membership fund. And we believe that we should be able to create that as a standard annually for supporting our overall budget. And the focus again is to support those things that most impact the student experience. So scholarships is an important item that we want to continue to find a revenue model over the next five years here to support through philanthropic giving, to really modernize who we are as a Division One athletic program. Because that would meet the threshold and standard of what a lot of other institutions are doing to support student scholarships in athletics. We also want to focus on creating a monthly student and staff community service opportunities. We're going to filter that not only through the student athlete advisory committee, not only through what the university's doing, great opportunities through the food pantry and others in the community and things that we've been doing, like reading to students. But we're going to try to find more ways, we're going to continue to refine our approach in how we and where we and when we engage with the community. We're going to call our staff to leadership as well. We're going to say, if we're not already involved in local, regional, national committees, working groups, advisory groups, now's the time, now's the time to get out and become active in a way so that we can have access to that information that immediately impacts the student experience in a positive way. We want to operate not only in a smart way fiscally, but we also want to take a step back and really be knowledgeable. We want to be intelligible, we want to be smart about the approach that we have with our students, as it's very important. We want to be able to justify all the things and time and money that we spend through active engagement with where all of this is going as an industry. At the end of the day, we want to make sure we're continuing to have a really strong graduation success rate within athletics of 80-plus percent. And we also want to make sure that we're continuing to recruit those students that want to be here at CSU, along with those students that 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 will succeed and help us recruit more students. That's the bottom line. And so we want to end some of these, this metrics, this plan of performance metrics with the development of a five-year strategic plan that I would like to then present to President Scott during this academic year. So I thank you very much for the time. I know that the virtual environment makes it harder to convey the passion that we feel over here and how we want to support our students in a positive way. But again, you know, it's going to be our championship era. We're in it now. And as we look back, we want to be able to define what that meant for the students. And so we look forward to taking the student-first approach, having investment and also innovation for our student athletes. Thank you, and go Cougars.
Thank you, Director Charles. Are there any additional questions from the board members for Director Charles? I have a question. You said that there's 15 sports, but you didn't say what they are. Can you just tell us what the sports are? And the other question I had is, we have 15 sports, but we only have nine head coaches. How's that working?
Great question. I'll start in. Great question, I'll start in reverse order if you allow. So track and field and cross country count as six sports. Men's and women's indoor and outdoor are four total, and then men's and women's cross country another two. When we look at our men's side, we have baseball, we had baseball, sorry, we switched that out with soccer, excuse me. We have men's basketball, we have men's cross country, we have tennis, golf and men's soccer. And when we're on the women's side, we have cross country as well, volleyball, women's tennis, women's soccer. And women's golf, and I believe that covers all. And so the the confusing part about how the listing happens, I left off men's and women's basketball. Is that men's, women's, cross country and track and field count as six total.
Okay, and all right. Okay, any other questions? I guess the last question I have is how are the student athletes doing, you know, for the fall sports handling cancellation of their sports, any other issues? Overall, how would you say they're, it's kind of a big deal to have your entire season canceled?
Yeah, it's a, so the best way to explain how we know what we know is that we've been doing regular weekly check ins with the students. Our coaches are required to have a lot of FaceTime with them and there are students who are not handling it so well. It's been a little difficult and we're looking at ways to support them emotionally and psychologically. But we do have our men's tennis program that opt to remain virtual, virtually enrolled for the fall semester. And we've seen some other students across the sports say that at least for the fall, while we while there's some uncertainty, we'd like to remain virtual. At that point, we'll just support them and provide them with support if they want scholarship during the fall. And so we've seen a lot of different response, but we have overall seen student athletes that are very positive and excited to be back here in person for the fall semester.
Is there a reason that you guys break out track and field and cross country in so many different categories of sports?
The reason being it's mandated from the NCAA level. And it all, it all based in participation counts and how the NCAA worked with the Office of Civil Rights. To look at sports offerings across sports, but it's part of our national structure.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think it's good that you're really looking at the athletic conference question. I mean, from my perspective, the whole purpose of intercollegiate athletics is ultimately to build character. You know, our kids aren't, students aren't for the most part, you know, pursuing careers of professional athletes, so. I think the academic success measures in terms of GPA graduation rates are just critical. And if shifting to a different conference, you know, creates less pressure on travel and time and frankly, budget. That, you know, matters a huge amount. And, you know, you can teach character with a lot of different sports, so if changing to a conference means some adjustment to the portfolio of sports. From my perspective, that's perfectly fine because it's sort of secondary to kind of what the underlying purpose of the program is. And, you know, with respect to football, I mean, they're obviously increasing awareness of safety issues with all of that as well, so. I would just encourage you to kind of in considering the conference question to keep kind of the big picture goal in mind, particularly given the population of students.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Director Charles? Right, thank you, it was a really thorough and detailed report and I think really very, very helpful. I guess I have one last question, is there any residual, how were the baseball students, did we get everybody transferred and taken care of or staying? And kind of where are they at would be helpful to know, to the extent you know, obviously some you may not have any knowledge.
So I do have, I do have some knowledge. We had about 25 baseball scholarship student athletes. We had one scholarship student athlete reenrolled for fall 2020 and went in touch with that student all summer. The remaining students, the 23 scholarship students plus non scholarship opted to not enroll and landed at other institutions. Majority landed at four year institutions.
All right, terrific, thank you. We have two minutes before we start, we're scheduled to start the next session with our new VP for enrollment and her team. And I'm noting that a couple, I see Director Smith and, but I think there's a couple other people who aren't on yet, right? So what we will do is take a short break until 10:10. So need coffee or buy a break and then we will start at 10:10 and hopefully Director or Vice President or Dr. Welch's, sorry. I have so many titles, I can't keep them all right, will, her team will be here and we can start, so just take a couple minutes and then we'll be right back.
I actually, Dr. Gooden is on as an attendee, but he needs to be added as a panelist so that when we switch over to screen share, he's able to do that. So could we just make sure that Dr. Gooden has the capability of being added as a panelist before we start?
Okay, yes, I sent it to him, I sent the invitation for a panelist to him, but I just resent, we just resent it again, so he can, he can log in.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You guys get that all set up, we'll be back in two minutes.
Yeah, he logged in as an attendee. As opposed to the panelist.
Dr. Gooden saying that he did not receive that link for panelists, so I don't know, I know we had some email issues over the weekend as well, so I don't know if we could just resend it to him.
He's probably not seeing it because that was sent probably last week sometime, so we just reset it to him again, so it should be okay.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Dr. Welch, his email is C G O O D E N at CSU dot edu. Are you muted?
Let me check. Yes, it's C Gooden G O O D E N at CSU. Oh, he says he has it, he's coming back in now, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, so we're ready, when we're ready to start, I'll make you, Dr. Welch, the presenter.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think you're muted.
Okay, after Roundtree, I did speak to Michael Holmes. Did you speak to Stephanie?
Yes.
Okay. Right. So Dr. Welch, I don't know if. If Dr. Potlory, did he, did he have a presentation too?
He does, yeah, we will be presenting on the undergraduate side, it'll be me, Carlos Rhonda, and then we'll be handing it off to Dr. Potlory for the graduate school presentation.
So, so thank you for that, that tip on looking at Moodle to figure out when your class is on campus, Dr. Roundtree.
Okay.
Information is key, right, it's key, right?
Looks like we have everybody, so let me just take a minute to introduce. Dr. Welch, Andrea Welch and her team, and I'll let her give a little bit about her background, but we are absolutely thrilled to have you, Dr. Wells. Thank you for joining us at Chicago State and I know that several members of your team are new as well. So if you'd like to introduce them, that would be terrific, this is obviously a critically important area for the school and we are thrilled that you are here to help us with it. So I'm going to turn it over to you and feel free to proceed.
Great, thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to speak with everyone today. I am going to go ahead and start sharing my screen since we have an intro slide. But I am very excited to be here, I've been here three weeks, so so far so good, and then that'll have a very busy season right now. So I'm excited to share what we know now and then also our future steps regarding strategic planning, so I am going to go ahead and share my screen. And just let me know if you can see it.
I can see it.
Okay, perfect, so basically today, there are three of us presenting today and I'm going to hand it off to Dr. Gooden and Ms. Smith. To introduce themselves and then I will introduce myself and then we will carry forward and introduce you to our unit, so. Dr. Gooden, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hello, yes, good morning, everyone, my name is Dr. Carlos Gooden, serve as the Director of Undergraduate Admissions here at CSU. Fun fact, I started on April 1, 2020, which is about 10 days after the stay at home, a stay at home order, so I look forward to presenting. To you ways that the Office of Admissions has remained agile and flexible around this time of getting our students to Chicago State University.
Dr. Gooden, could you just give us a little bit of your background, where did you come from, what's your doctorate in?
Absolutely, I'm more than happy to, yes, I'm originally from Ohio, however, I transitioned to Chicago State from by way of New Orleans. Prior to Chicago State, I was the Director of Recruitment at U Chicago for the Booth School of Business. My dissertation focuses and my research is in higher education, my research is on urban public universities and the ways that admissions policies. Either promote access to institutions or it could potentially cause barriers, so. I did a quantitative case study looking at urban public universities and admissions policies, particularly looking at standardized test scores, which I think is incredibly timely. Considering we're here, the portfolio of schools that I've worked for in admissions over the last 12 or 13 years have predominantly been urban public universities. As well as an HBCU down in New Orleans as well, and so it was almost like a great fit for me. As we look at an alignment with just what I'm interested in and working the populations I serve and the mission of Chicago State University, so I'm really excited and happy to be here.
Thank you.
No problem.
Good morning, this is Rhonda Smith, I am the Director of Financial Aid, I have been with Chicago State since April of 2019. For just a little over a year and I am born and raised in Chicago, I am a graduate of Northern Illinois University. I have a master's degree in communications. I worked in consulting directly before coming to Chicago State University, but I have experience in both proprietary and public. Having worked for city colleges of Chicago, so I'm happy to be with Chicago State, looking to assist our students through the learning process. You know, managing the finances so that they can focus on their academics.
And I'm Dr. Andrea Welch, I have been here three weeks and excited to be here, I actually, I'm also originally from Ohio. I was born and raised in Southeast Ohio in the Appalachian region, region. Found myself still in the Midwest, I have a background, I've actually started off at Ohio University in Athens, Ohio. It's the Bobcat School and not the Buckeyes and Student Affairs. And then found my way up getting some more enrollment experience by working at IU South Bend as a manager one stop center. And from there, I come more recently from Valparaiso University as the Executive Director for Retention. And 2013, I received my doctorate from Indiana State University. And while I wanted to do my, my dissertation quantitatively based on retention. I was actually really encouraged to do a qualitative dissertation and I did it on women in poverty in the Appalachian region. Where I did a lot of the cross sectional theory. Between internal and external development of college, women in college who basically had a zero EFC. What is it that made them able to graduate? So it was an interview style format and the dissertation really revealed a lot of different strategies that. Really pertain to a lot of the students here at Chicago State and the other public institutions that I've attended, so that was really exciting work. So now I find myself here at Chicago State, I'm really excited. I have extensive background in enrollment services, but also using data, building data culture. And using that then in the form of strategic planning, so that is certainly something that we'll be talking about today. So I love data, so this presentation is basically an overview and introduction of enrollment management. I'm excited to share with you what Dr. Gooden and the Smith have been doing in their offices to support our students. So we're just going to go ahead and roll along, so. I just wanted to share basically the basic overview of our enrollment management unit, so I think this is important to know what makes up our unit for Chicago State. As you can see, we have financial aid, our registrar office is also located under enrollment management. We have a Coordinator of Examinations, David Hampton, he has done excellent work getting our students the tests they need in order for them to enroll. Dr. Avalas is actually our operating system support for enrollment management, she assists with compliance, she is assisting with making a lot of our processes more automated. Which is part of our strategic planning initiatives. And then, of course, we have Dr. Gooden who is overseeing the admissions office. I also want to point out that we have Marlena Johnson, who's actually an active duty military leave right now, but she is, she oversees our Veterans Resource Center. Which is actually also housed under our umbrella, so we have quite the team, we are, we are looking at hiring a new registrar soon. We're doing first round interviews the end of this week so that that will not re-bacon too much longer, hopefully. And then we also have a lot of different positions that are open right now within admissions. And we are building that team currently, so under Dr. Gooden's good leadership, we have some great candidates that we'll be interviewing in the next couple of weeks. So I just wanted to give you an overview of our structure. So I want to go over strategic planning for Chicago State and so I had been here three weeks, so I'm getting into the data, really learning about the landscape of the institution. But the main goal for this semester is to solidify a strategic enrollment management plan for our institution. That is going to involve students as prospects through their graduation and then also tracking their employment. So there are some short term goals that I have and then also some long term vision regarding strategic planning. And this is what we're going to be anticipating doing this semester. So we will be developing a comprehensive strategic enrollment management plan. What I mean by that is that we will be starting with the enrollment management unit and really looking at our student funnel. And I'll get to that in a little bit more detail in a bit, but we want to look at, you know, how are we able to attract our prospects? And then move them through the different enrollment steps in a seamless way so that their experience one is good. And to make sure that we are being very strategic with our target populations and who we are bringing in and retaining. So once they're here at Chicago State, the other piece of this strategic enrollment management plan is also our retention. So working with academic. So working with academic affairs, our faculty, academic support, athletics, you know, what are we doing in order to create a really good community for our students and making sure that we're very strategic and intentional with metrics on, you know, what is working, what is not, and then making sure that we're, we're more agile, um, with how we're attempting, uh, the retention side of our student experience. And then also looking at our departmental best practices and policies. So we are, um, in the process of collecting policy, uh, within the enrollment management unit. And that process, um, is going to involve really looking at, you know, what policies, um, are good, which policies would need some improvement or have not been visited for a while. And so that we're going to really take a close look at making sure that our policies will be aligning with our mission and making sure that we're intentional with how we are, um, then employing those policies and the best practices. The long-term vision, of course, which I think we're all excited about is we need increased enrollment overall. And so, um, when Dr. Gooden talks today, he's going to ta- tell you about some of the strategies that he is starting to put in place already, um, over the summer and, uh, throughout this fall about how we want to increase our enrollment for Chicago State. This also leads to increased revenue. So as we start looking at our projected enrollment goals, uh, working with the institutional effectiveness and research office, um, we're going to be looking at, you know, how are we going to be able to really hone in and project well, um, our enrollment? And what does that mean then for our budget? Um, so we have to work really hand in hand with that to make sure we're a healthy institution. The other thing too is building some strong community partnerships. So some of, um, the work behind enrollment, especially on the admission side, is opening that funnel up, you know, getting more students in at the top of that funnel to make sure that, um, you know, we have a robust pool of students to then move forward through, um, to enrollment. So, uh, strong community partners, partnerships would include anything from re-looking at articulations with our community college systems, also looking at, uh, local businesses. Um, how can we partner and really increase maybe our adult learner population? So, um, we really just want to make sure that, that we're going to be, you know, supporting the institutional strategic plan, but also making sure, um, that we hold on to this long-term vision with all of the short-term goals that we are creating. Basically, um, this is my process on building a strategic enrollment plan. I actually just sent in an institutional and situational assessment to my leadership team within enrollment management this morning, just to kind of start, uh, the process of really assessing where we are as its institution. What are some perceived opportunities or threats to what we're trying to do and how are we going to overcome, um, some of that? So we're going to start our institutional situational assessment this week. Um, we also want to make sure that we are, um, including people in this process to make sure that we are aligning with the institutional strategic direction. So President Scott, the Provost, uh, and other key members of our university community, we want to make sure that we include them on, uh, the creation of, um, this strategic enrollment plan. We definitely want to look at the student recruitment strategy. And like I said, Dr. Gooden has more details about that in a bit. Um, so he's done excellent work with really looking at how we can expand on not just marketing, but also just our approach with students overall, especially during the pandemic. Um, we've had to be creative, uh, in doing this. So he has some great, um, initiatives and ideas that he will be doing. Um, we also want to look at the strategy for retention of student success. Again, we need to be very intentional with tracking our students and their, their, uh, success initiatives. You know, are we making sure that students know early on in the semester that they may be already falling behind? And if they are, how are we attaching our campus resources to ensure that they're getting the help they need, um, in order to boost our, uh, retention rate? And then of course, we always have to tie in student financial marketing strategy, uh, with any strategic plan. So this is the plan, uh, for this semester is to work through that process. Along with that, um, it's really important that we have a strong data culture. So I will be sharing today just some very overall, you know, um, you know, retention rates and, um, headcount enrollment. But as I start working here and we start putting together the strategic plan, we were, we are going to compile more data, um, in a more intentional way so that when we do speak with you and, you know, I, there were some great questions early on about really digging down into the whole, you know, student athlete, uh, profile and what does that look like compared to our undergrad population? There will be many things like that that will be coming out of this, uh, data culture that we'll be building. We definitely want to create a data-informed, student-driven approach. And what I mean by that is we want to be informed by the data, but we also want to make sure that we're really paying attention to our student population here at Chicago State. Sometimes it's really easy to look at some external numbers, um, you know, for public institutions in Illinois, let's say, and there's a trend. Of course, we want to look at that trend, but we also want to see how does it apply to our specific student population? And maybe there are gaps in our, the way that we're doing things that we need to improve on that is just specific to our institution. So we just want to make sure we have a balance, um, and really looking at that. We also need holistic data analysis to understand our student experience. So, you know, gathering student feedback, um, providing ways and opportunities for student feedback about their, um, experience, uh, experience with financial aid, registrar, um, academic support, what, whatever, um, experiences they're using. We want to make sure that we are, um, getting a very, um, holistic view about the, the whole student. Also building a data governance team and process. So as we begin the strategic planning process, what typically happens then is that a subgroup is formed, hopefully, uh, and it's already kind of starting, uh, a subgroup to really start looking at the data and then how are we processing our data reports in a strategic way? Um, and making it just part of our daily work. Um, so really trying to create, um, a group such as that. So I want to show you, and so I know there's some tiny font on here, so I apologize, but it's really just a snapshot at what a typical recruitment funnel looks like. And so we do start with prospects. Um, uh, so these are individuals that, you know, we, we have a name and a way to contact them, basically. The respondents are those out of the prospect pool that basically have acted or begun engaging with us, so with our admissions office per se. Then, once they're interested and they, they, they actually make a decision, they apply. So the, these are the applicants. So they're initiating, um, the application and submit a completed app. And then between applicants and admits, this is really a key, um, area that we're going to look at because we want to make sure that we have some performance indicators so that we are tracking this enrollment funnel very closely. So once they apply and have a, an admissions application in and we make a decision, these are some initiatives that Dr. Gooden has really, um, discussed with me, but he has worked, he's already working on with his team of making sure that we have some really clear steps about what they need to do after they apply. They need, you know, to fill out their FAFSA. They will need to, um, create their student account. So there's, there's a lot of different things that what we can use as touchpoints or milestones to make sure that we have a very clear vision of what this funnel and the numbers are looking like. And that way we'll be able to project better, um, the enrollment, uh, for the upcoming semesters and create some baseline data for that. So we just want to make sure that whatever we do, that it's clear in this part of our strategic plan about how we're moving students through this funnel. The other funnel, which I think sometimes for enrollment management, we miss it.
Dr. Welch, I, Dr. Welch, I have a question, just a question, just to go back to that last slide. So you said you're focusing on the, between applicants and admissions or, um, enrollment. But I'm wondering why are we not looking at people who we touch base with and then who don't apply? Are we looking at that? Are you going to look at that at all?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. We're looking at the entire funnel. Yeah. We're looking at the entire, entire funnel. So the one thing that we do need to do is increase the top of this funnel. So we need to increase the number of prospects that we're reaching out to so that we have a, a wider pool at the top so that we are able to yield hopefully more students as we go down through the funnel. And so.
I guess my question is, I get that point. I mean, obviously you have a bigger pool, you have more chance. What I'm interested in is, I don't know, think that we have an understanding of why people choose not to apply, right? I mean, if they don't apply, they're not coming in. So, um, and so I didn't hear any, anyway, I just think that that is. Yeah, that's okay. At the meeting, but if they don't apply, then it doesn't matter.
Oh, no. So all part of the funnel work is also assessing at each stage why, why they have not have or have not come to us, right? So that's all part of the assessment piece. Um, when, when we start building a strategic plan, that's part of the metrics that we're going to use. So if, if we have a respondent who, who didn't choose us not to apply, we need to make sure that we're putting some assessment pieces in there to determine why that was, you know? Was it something in our control of why they chose not to come? Or is this something that was out of our control, maybe a family situation? Um, but then what's the follow-up, right? So if they decide not to come to us, let's say this fall, what are we doing in order to try to help them over those obstacles so that they could potentially come the next semester? So there's a lot of assessment that will be built into that strategic planning piece, and I, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Question, uh, just to follow up on that, not that you, you know, have the answer to it now, but just a thought. So as a part of this, so I know you said follow-up, if they don't decide to come, follow-up after that, um, you know, and for the subsequent year, do we do, um, a survey that allows them to give us the reason why they didn't choose to apply?
That's what I'm trying to learn right now, since I've been here just a few weeks. But I think, um, Dr. Gooden could probably speak to that a little bit more than I could at this point. If we do not, we should start. We should start doing this. If we are, then it's a matter of making sure we're, have a very clear process of compiling that data and making sure that we're, um, using it, um, in strategic ways. And so I don't have the answer for that right now, but I made a little note and then just to make sure that maybe Dr. Gooden could maybe touch on this during his, his piece.
Okay, thanks. And then, and just a way for us to, just a thought as you're building out your strategic plan, um, if there's not something in place, I think it's a good way, um, President Scott's been doing a lot in terms of branding and marketing. And we want to learn, um, you know, why, you know, C, CSU may not be, um, a first choice or if there's barriers or programming that we're not offering that, that students are interested in. I think those are all ways that we can continue to, um, you know, build interest in the university and offer what our students are looking for. So I think it'd be helpful to do that.
Oh, absolutely. And I actually helped institute, uh, some of these practices at some past institutions that I have worked for. And it is very eye-opening sometimes and, um, it's, it just, it's very, very fruitful information to have, um, as we continue to strategically plan. So definitely on the same plate, um, same page for sure, uh, with that. Any other questions before I continue? Okay, so the other, the other funnel piece that we'll be working on with the Strategic Enrollment Management Plan is the Retention of Student Success funnel. Um, there is a lot of, of work, uh, making sure that we have a really strong, uh, retention funnel. And what I mean by that is basically from the time they register their first semester, it's about tracking their term progress. Um, what I mean by that is making sure we have some data points, um, throughout the semester and at the end as a baseline so that every semester after, we're able to really track, um, you know, courses that students are taking. Maybe there's some high, um, letter grades of Ds, Ss and withdrawals from those courses. Uh, we call them DFWs. Um, if that's the case, you know, why is there a high rate, right? And what kind of interventions are students receiving, um, who are struggling in particular courses? So this term progress is really important to make sure we're tracking. Um, also looking at the different academic levels, um, for students to make sure that they're successful. Some of this is also not just looking at a freshman to sophomore retention rate by really taking a look, uh, deep dive in the different cohorts of students, such as our first-time full-time students, our transfer student population, you know, what is the retention rate first to second year? But more importantly, beyond that year, um, are we retaining them? Do we have a sophomore slump where they may be dropping off after the sophomore year? So we really want to make sure we're tracking the various student groups and making sure that, um, we're analyzing that and then going back and looking at what initiatives we have in place. And if there aren't any, we need to make sure that we are doing really intentional interventions with our students. We also want to make sure we're looking at a graduation rates. So just like with any funnel, it's about who's starting and then who's ending with us with a degree. And then further, what jobs are they receiving? Um, are we able to have really strong alumni engagement at the end of this funnel? And so all of this is, is related to making sure that we are helping them along the way. And involving our faculty, uh, looking at faculty engagement, um, the financial issues these students may be facing. How can we provide, you know, financial literacy? And I know, um, Ms. Smith has, um, a lot of things that she's been working on, uh, that she'll be sharing it with about financial aid. So just really looking at how are all these things working together? How are we tracking it and how are we using data in order to make sure that these student experiences, um, are as intentional as they need to be?
How are we tracking like the employment placement? Professional, you know, placement kind of rates?
I'm not, I haven't been here too long, so I'm just now asking that, but I'll let someone else take that question.
Uh, Dr. Roundtree may have, uh, additional, uh, in- information about this, but we have a data sharing agreement with the, um, Illinois Department of Employment Security as all, as, as do all of the other public universities. And our goal now is to start trying to get our, our employment data, you know, from them to, to, to track how our students are going, doing and, um, uh, their, their, their income. We do do cer- certain surveys, uh, of students once they graduate from Chicago State, uh, after exit. Uh, I'm not sure of the intervals at which, at which we do the surveys, but we do survey students on their employment. Dr. Roundtree, you may have more information about the intervals of the, the post-graduation survey.
Right. There's a typical one-year post-graduation to find out about employment. But, um, and also some of the programs collect their own data, especially those programs that are specialty accredited where they have to do a periodic check-in. But, um, we are still working on a coordinated system so that we have a fuller set of data regarding graduation and employment. And we're looking at some other software packages that may help us.
All right. Um, any other questions regarding that or would you like me to continue? Okay, so some of the enrollment management priorities for this semester is again, looking at our, um, internal funnel work process, making sure that we're getting students through to the services they need in a very logical and clear way and making sure those are communicated across the university so that everyone's informed, um, about this process. We're also working, um, Dr. Gooden especially, has worked heavily with, um, our marketing and communication department, um, looking at our targeted recruitment strategies that are coming up. And again, he'll be sharing more on that. Um, implementation of a CRM, um, so customer-related management system, making sure that here on the undergrad admission side, that we are, um, going to have a CRM system that works for all. So it works for us, graduate school, retention. So we're really, um, looking forward to that implementation piece. And then of course, going through our policy and process improvements, um, we're working on that, um, simultaneously along with the strategic plan. So some next steps, um, I won't go over these in detail, but just so you know, there's a, a high timeline that is probably aspirational, but I would really like to have a really solid, uh, draft of a strategic enrollment plan, um, by the end of November. And that's going to give us time in order to get the right people around the table, the data that we need in order to analyze, are we aligning with our institutional, um, uh, strategic plan, our direction? Um, and so we're really looking forward to, uh, working on these next steps. Just for a brief data overview, and then I'll hand it over to Dr. Gooden with all the good work he's doing in admissions. But right now, uh, we're looking at some overall student characteristics. So just so, um, you're aware, and maybe you are already aware. Um, but right now, the running total for fall is around 1,351 undergrad students and 629 graduate students. So again, this is a running total. We have a census that occurs 10 days after the semester and then a special sus- a special session, um, census that occurs. And that's really going to tell us then what our benchmark will be as far as total enrollment because we are enrolling students, um, still this week. We're also looking at, uh, we have, um, more female than male students in our undergrad and graduate, um, side. Of course, our percentage is based on ethnicity. We, um, we have roughly, um, 82% um, are, are black or Hispanic students on campus, um, for undergrad. And then of course. For undergrad, and then of course, there's. Similarly with graduate and graduate numbers as well, sorry. So degrees awarded from July twenty seventeen through June of twenty eighteen, so I got the typo. There were eight hundred and twenty-nine degrees awarded, and this is located in our fact book on our page, on our Chicago State page. So we're looking at total enrollment and total undergraduate enrollment five year trend. So this is showing basically a snapshot of. What the total headcount enrollment was on campus and the years fall fourteen through fall of eighteen. And then you'll see the, the next bar over is your undergraduate total compared to the total enrollment. So this is giving you that snapshot of basically what our total headcount enrollment. Percentage is of undergraduates. And so as you can see, there's been a decline over these last two years. We're hoping to change that by next year. So that's our goal is to make sure that we are looking forward to increasing our enrollment. Also, I just wanted to provide a snapshot of overall retention rates, first time as students, first time full time students are in blue. And then our transfer student population is an orange. We have fluctuated quite a bit, just, you know, with the transfer. Retention rate, but we actually retain our transfer students fairly well at this university. And so that's something that we really want to make sure we capitalize on. As we move forward. And of course, this is just a snapshot of one of many daily reports that we get regarding our headcount, credit hours, retention. But I just wanted to show you from last Friday where we're standing based on the previous year. We're at about negative eleven percent right now with our overall headcount. But like I said, students are. Making decisions later this year compared to years previous. We're wondering if that's the pandemic. Or if that's because of something else. So that's something that we are definitely going to be looking into. With this population coming in this fall. And so at this point, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Gooden. So if Dr. Gooden could get screen share capabilities, that would be great. And I'll stop sharing my screen. So. I'm going to hand it over to admissions.
Awesome, man. I am showing my screen.
Before we move on, could I just ask, so what's the goal in terms of total? Enrollment for the institution? Like, I mean, do we have a sense of like what level? Makes kind of the institution viable? I mean, I think everybody agrees that the current numbers. You know, don't really work in terms of generating the revenue, having kind of the funds for the programs that we need, et cetera. Like what, what is kind of the, from a strategic perspective? Kind of the, the level that we think, you know, we need for the university to kind of be what it can be and, and should be.
You know, that's a really good question, trustee. We are looking at, you know, the. You know, the first thing is, is like before we did make a decision on, we do need, we have a financial, financial target. We ought to have at least five thousand. Students in, in the university that really make it a viable financially. But we have to figure out going back to, you know, fourteen and fifteen. Really looking at our data, who we lost, why we lost them, if we can figure that out. There was a report that was given about two weeks ago by the Illinois Board of Higher Education. We have lost in Illinois. Probably, first of all, we've, we've seen a dramatic drop in black students, I mean, in, 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 uh, in the black population of the state. We've seen probably about three hundred and fifty thousand black families leave Illinois. Along with that, we've seen about a twenty-nine percent drop in black student attendance. In public universities in Illinois, which is another thing that impacted our enrollment. We also had the, the budget crisis of fifteen and sixteen. That where Chicago State saw a two thousand student drop in its, in its, in its population. Along with, you know, a similar and more substantial drop. In population in our feeder schools, which are the community colleges. I think the community colleges lost about fourteen, fifteen thousand students during the budget impact. So all of those have, all of those kind of stress factors are impacting our enrollment. And that is why we have joined with Ala Parvi, which is our closest community college. To really collaborate on not only programming and pathway programming, but also on enrollment initiatives. So that, so I mean, I say that to say, you know, one of the, I think the biggest impacts for us has been. The decline in black students enrollment in college generally. It has reached a crisis level in our state, which is why we, Chicago State is leading the, leading the charge for the Equity Working Group. That trustee McDate and Chair Zapp are also participating on. We have to look at ways to improve access. Retention and graduation rates for our black students in Illinois because it's really at, like I said, a crisis level. And that I think is, has been one of the biggest impacts on our enrollment. Given that we are the only predominantly black institution in Illinois. And, and you look at the numbers and our, you know, our black population has significantly declined.
That's helpful. Yeah, and I, I get that there are a lot of causes to this, but it just seems like from a management standpoint, like we kind of have to know where we need to end up. And that like a five thousand is kind of the figure that's helpful to know. And if that, you know, requires investment, I mean, I think that kind of narrative is one that. Is important to be able to articulate to our funders and the legislature and everybody else that like. Increasing ten percent a year from two thousand is not going to get us there. If we need to be at five thousand, I mean, it needs sort of a step change. Order of magnitude, you know, difference. And if that requires like significantly more investment, then. It seems like we ought to be kind of bold in asking for that.
Can you all hear me okay? Hello?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, awesome. Well, glad to be here again. My name is Dr. Carlos Gooden and I serve as the Director of Admissions and I want to. Thank you all for not only having me here today, but also thank Dr. Welch for that overview particularly of the admissions funnel. And the retention funnel, the funnel really guides the work that all admissions do at every institution. And so. I've really taken a lot of time just intimately bonding with the data and the trends that exist with our funnel. As it really does guide best practices for what we do and when we do it. And really interested and excited to share with you some sort of like unique characteristics of Chicago State's university's funnel. But also how we've responded to not only that, but also the challenges that have presented themselves to us. Over the last few months, particularly looking at. Some of the programming strategies that we've been able to create here in admissions to. Ensure that we are doing all that we can to make sure we have a healthy and strong incoming first year class. While also taking into consideration the context of the pandemic. And so. Here's some programming strategies that have really guided our work over the last three or four months. I'll share with you. Some statistics and, you know, outcomes as a result of these strategies. Ways that we've pivoted around COVID nineteen challenges, but also some. Future goals and strategies that we have planned for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. So this is what has really been our priorities over the last three months. One, looking at our admissions policies. And again, rooted in my research, the ways that those admissions policies promote equity and access and using that as a framework for the work that we do. Once I came on April one. Faculty Senate and the Provost and Academic Affairs had already been working on the test optional policy. So it was immediate need for us to be able to market, communicate and implement the test optional policy. Students with a two point seven five GPA or higher are no longer required to submit standardized test scores. So looking at our current pipeline of students and students that we've already made decisions on. And executing essentially that policy, but we also look at the application fee. And the confirmation fee and in line with a lot of our peer institutions, it followed the trend. Of waiving the application fee for this particular year considering unemployment. Had ballooned up to a critical mass at unprecedented numbers and just the financial impact of COVID. They've removed the fifty dollar confirmation fee. The confirmation fee essentially is for admitted students. And it tells us if the student is selecting Chicago State University as their college choice and that they are coming. Again, in line with other, other peer institutions, we did not keep that fee. However. We did institute a confirmation form or an intention survey where students had to. Inform us if they were coming to Chicago State or not. And at that point, we did collect information regarding students who were not interested in why. They were likely choosing another institution. More often than not, it boiled down to scholarships. And being offered competitive scholarships at other institutions was typically the prior, the top reason why students should not choose Chicago State. The third bullet point there in terms of our priorities was dates and deadlines. We really communicated priority deadlines this year around scholarships. Around admissions applications, confirmations, events and RSVPs really driving that culture. I learned quickly and early, just anecdotally from my colleagues, that typically Chicago State University students wait. Until about a week or two before the semester to try and move. So in order to sort of change that culture, we began pushing deadlines as priority. And of course, when that deadline would hit, we would then say it's extended, but that is a tactic that I've used to be able to help push students. To get the call to actions that we would need to get them through the enrollment next steps. Our data strategies have been very exciting to implement and look at them grow. My philosophy with data strategies is if it moves, then you measure it. So we've been measuring everything from new prospect information data, orientation registrations, you know, how many students have filled out a scholarship? How many students have enrolled for Rise Academy, attending our events? And so some of those metrics really help us understand what is happening. Beyond what students are telling us. So it's a very quantitative, quantitative heavy focused. But it helps us, as you can see, manage our admissions funnel. And I think that was a great question that was posed earlier. What we've done over the last three months is look at how do we continue to engage students, not only prospect. Through admit, but when we look at managing admissions funnel, particularly this year. One of the things that I really emphasize with my staff is if the student is applying on August fifth. That student is likely to actually enroll. So we have to strike while the iron is hot. So. We leverage the number of different outreach campaigns, both email as well as phone calls. With students at each step of the funnel, making sure that we weren't just heavily concentrating on those students. Who were only admitted and getting those through typically, you know, thinking of the two. If a student was admitted in November and had not done anything versus in terms of their enrollment next steps. But we have a student who's applying in August fifth, particularly in this climate. We felt that it was equally important to make sure that we were giving attention across the board. Virtual engagement strategies were, became the bulk of our focus and I'll do a deep dive into some of those. And really kind of paint the picture for you for what that looked like. Talking about our admitted student next steps and how do we articulate those in a way? That doesn't really overwhelm students, but also clearly communicates what students have to do in a very transparent manner. Also being big brothers and big, big brothers and big sisters and educating. The new incoming students on what these processes are and why they're important. We also inherited orientation over the summer and looking at how do we use orientation? As a conduit to get students through their enrollment next step so that they're better prepared. On their first day of class that also ultimately sets up retention. And we also engaged in a very large strategy to involve faculty in the recruitment process, which was incredibly exciting, I would say rewarding as well. I know that students really enjoyed that and I'll talk to you a little bit more about what that looked like. And the next phase of that is looking at how do we engage alumni in the recruitment process as well. So some of the challenges that we have faced here at Chicago State, particularly as COVID. Has become the topic of conversation for a number of different universities and a number of different departments. I would say we were uniquely impacted. As you recall, I started April first, it was about seven or 10 days after everyone was working remotely. The biggest way is that it's happening particularly in the admissions industry and in our professional networks is talking about. How we are navigating around SAT and ACT test cancellations. That is typically how we identify students who would be a good fit for the institution. But also it could potentially prevent a lot of students from meeting the minimum academic standards. And so. Keeping that at the forefront of the work that we do, I think that we had a very rapid response. To the impacts with students not being able to take the test or test, taking dates being canceled. I want to say by April tenth, we had already announced our test optional policy, which was incredibly impactful. Looking at Chicago Public Schools recently announced in the two, last two weeks that all students will be coming, will be learning e-learning. But they adjusted that as well as in March. So typical activities that we would conduct would include college fairs face to face, right? We would be doing high school visits, meeting in person with CPS. Network specialists as well as principals, doing onsite application days. A lot of the activities that we did in support of getting new applications and helping students through their admitted next steps. Were impacted as a result of the shift to e-learning and it really forced us to really adapt to this recruitment and engagement environment virtually. And I'll show you some ways that we've pivoted around that as well. But also we have to talk about technology and access, although that we have shifted. As an institution to recruit. Virtually and, and, and provide this engagement remotely. Our students have not always had the technology to be able to access. So we've had to implement socially distanced ways that students can still do their enrollment next steps. Face to face as well. For example, we shifted to proctoring placement exams, right? Virtually, however, we found not all students had access to wifi in their home as new incoming students. If they did, they might not have had the bandwidth to support being proctored virtually. If they even had the actual wifi or the technology and the laptop to be able to support that. So. We found ourselves constantly identifying what those challenges are and, and rapidly responding. We had to then institute on campus face to face. About five students at a time spaced out six feet apart. But that was sort of like a constant exercise, exercise that we were doing to make sure that we were meeting student needs. The biggest challenge, I think overall, is just seeing the shift in student college choice trends. Again, there were narratives on what students would do, a lot of theories and strategizing and creating. Strategies around them. So we were wondering for first time freshmen, what are they going to do? Are a lot of students who were planning to go out of state? Still choosing to go out of state in COVID nineteen. There were a number of different surveys that I can clearly can remember saying that students. About thirty-eight to forty percent of students were choosing not to go to a school this particular year, that they were looking to at least defer with their chosen institution. Which could have impacted our students who have chosen CSU. And may have chosen to delay until spring, or will students be taking a gap year altogether to work, support their home? Will students be changing institutions? One of the things that we noticed is that there were particularly a shift in students. We saw an increase in the number of first time freshmen. Applications we received towards the end of July, a lot of that was around the buzz around Rise Academy. Particularly for transfer students, we saw an increase in applications in August. I think a lot of students took courses over the summer. But we saw an increase from HBCUs from out of state. Students, particularly when Morehouse, Clark, Atlanta and Spelman announced that they were going remotely. I'm assuming a lot of parents anecdotally were saying, well, if you're going to be doing remotely, you may as well do it remotely. Here and stay at a very just more affordable tuition rate, accessible tuition rate here since you're going to be here at home. So we saw an increase from Tuskegee as well as a number of different HBCUs. City Colleges of Chicago, we have worked directly with them, particularly Ala Parvi College. And understanding what the trends are there with my peer institutions at public universities in the state of Illinois. Only one or two institutions are in, reporting an increase in transfer population. City Colleges is reporting a decrease as well. And anecdotally, we're, we're thinking that that has to do with the shift to remote and maybe some uncomfortableness around that. However, we're continued to working with the transfer students on our pipeline. And we've leveraged a lot, a number of different strategies, including a specific transfer scholarship, transfer information sessions specifically and a number of different. Targeted communications to that population as well. So as we talk about what this virtual engagement looks like, here's sort of our eight point plan. UChat, it's our university chat function. The spirit and the framework that we use for our virtual engagement was to make sure that people knew. That Chicago State University was not only accessible during this time, as we did remain open the entire time during the stay at home order. But that we were also approachable and available. And so. But that we were also approachable um and available. And so when you think of how do we make sure that students know that we're accessible, available and approachable? And how do we keep them abreast of all of the new um changes and and events that we have going on? Um, our university chat function allows visitors to the csu.edu slash admissions. If they landed on our page. A sidebar would then pop up saying you can speak live, one on one in a chat function with an enrollment specialist. And so. Um, although students could not physically come to campus between March twenty third um and July first, we still remained um engaged. Um, and I'll do a deep dive on U Chat stats. We also had a number of different call out campaigns specifically. Um, we had staff assigned to actually call students within one week of them applying. Um, we had a staff member give them a call to congratulate them on them applying, um as well as informing them of their next steps. Every single student received at least one admitted student next steps phone call. And as they confirmed their admissions, we also reached out them to them as well to lead them to their enrollment next steps. Um, talking about financial aid, housing, how to claim their account. Um, increased email outreach, um students in our pool, um whether they were filling out a request for information form. Confirm their admissions or admitted, they received at least one email from us a week. Um, we had a number of different events that we launched over the summer. We offered an information session virtually every Tuesday at three thirty. As well as an admitted students next steps presentation um every Thursday at three thirty. Um, and transfer sessions that often um presented on Saturdays as well as our orientations. We had faculty based information sessions. That's our summer career Friday and I'll do a deep dive. Um, and I also realized that I'm talking about our outreach efforts, right? Um, I don't think that that really gives um the credit. Um, to our behind the scenes staff and our operations. Um, when you're talking about the stay at home order, we really had to think about how. Um, do all facets of the admissions office adjust to this? We had to think about how do we then get admissions decisions conducted from home? How do we then get students their admissions decision packet saying congratulations, you're admitted? How do we scan index um the thousands of transcripts um that came to us virtually? We've seen a decrease in the number of mailed. Transcripts coming to us, but what ended up happening was it caused an increase of community colleges and four year institutions. As well as high schools electronically sending documents to us. And so. Um, working closely with our processing team to making sure that we weren't getting behind on attaching those documents so that we can make an admissions decision. Um, I've also gone on the virtual tour and virtual road with President Scott and Provost Roundtree. We engaged at least once a month um in these programs titled CSU is your partner. Where we engage CPS stakeholders, whether they were network specialists, um CPS principals. Um, as well as engaging um districts outside of CPS. We've have expanded out into the western suburbs of Chicago. Um, and even had a few from Northwest Indiana join us. Um, as we presented on some latest updates and ways that Chicago State University can partner with those districts in support of getting students. Um, out of high school and then into post secondary enrollment, specifically Chicago State University. So just to kind of do a a small deep dive, um, one of the first things that uh we did. Um, on our April thirtieth and July fourteenth, we hosted two open houses. Um, and together they yielded about eight hundred different registrations. Um, and the engagement was incredibly high in those particular mom programs. Um, each each program featured a welcome from the presidents. We had the dean of students speak. Um, our second program actually featured a student panel. You can see Jerel and Lou here. Um, they were their testimonies were incredible. As they talked about ways that Chicago State supported them um through the pandemic. Um, some of the unique program programming we offered in terms of emergency funding, um laptops and. It was based on the peer to peer recruitment model that, you know, we as staff and faculty can talk about all of the things that we have going on. But um, it's more believable from a firsthand account. And so the impact that they had was um very high and very well received. Um, from the attendees. Um, but those open houses proved um a great opportunity for us to really share what's happening at Chicago State. Um, we featured our academics as well as um student life. Um, and all the things that we had to offer in terms of just this initial handshake. So no matter where students were in the process. Whether this was their first introduction to Chicago State University or they're admitted student and they just needed um one last nudge and convincing on what they needed to do. Um, in order to enroll. And sort of the tone and tenor of that really rests a lot on our new branding, as I'm sure you're aware of. We received a new logo as well as a new tagline um with the support of marketing. And I really wanted to share with you what we've used in every single one of our open house programs. Um, that really set the pace and just the energy level. Um, and I think they really um resonated with students. And so I'm going to show you this video now. It's about two minutes, um but it really helped us keep the momentum going as we continue to engage. Um, creatively in this virtual format.
Let's put your ambition in motion. Let's turn roadblocks into new paths to success. For over one hundred fifty years, Chicago State University has fostered ambition, started careers. And built successful lives of accomplishment for our students. Now, it's your turn. At Chicago State University, you'll find five academic. Of this fifty six degree programs in all. Our school of pharmacy is number one in the Midwest for educating minority student scholars. We're ranked first in Illinois and second nationwide among public universities for educating and supporting African American student scholars. We've achieved one hundred percent job placement in nursing, pharmacy and occupational therapy. We're number two in the nation for graduating black physics majors. For economic mobility, CSU is in the top four percent nationwide among all colleges and universities. And you get the attention you deserve because on average, there are only ten students for every faculty member.
We have some of the best professors, some of the best mentors.
We have people that uplift you, that will open doors for you, that will help you.
It's an opportunity where you're able to make adjustments.
Chicago State University, put your career in motion, your connection to friends and professors in motion. Put your future in motion. Chicago State University.
I mean, did you just get goosebumps? I know you got goosebumps, right? And so I I really enjoyed that video. You can see some of the talking points that we really emphasized in that video. Um, and again, and again, with collaboration with marketing, um, I think the CSU in motion tagline really honors our rich history and legacy. Um, of being an anchor of support to students, um while showing um how not only we've adjusted to the potential roadblocks. Um, but also supported students through that as well. Um, after the first open house, um, we did launch a survey with students and attendees. Um, we quickly found that what they were looking for was more engagement with faculty. Um, they wanted to hear a lot more from more CSU people. And we were like, well, how do we do this in a remote environment? Um, at the advisement of our marketing department on just best practices on virtual webinars. It's you have one hour max. Um, with individuals on a webinar and then you lose them, right? Particularly the students that we're looking at. And so. Um, we kept most of that as a question and answer to make sure that we were responding to the students' needs. So once you. Pours out the twenty five minutes of a question and answer, which was wildly popular, we had thirty minutes to really deliver some um. Relatable content. So the answer to that, we launched a summer career Friday series where every Friday. The deans, the faculty and advisors in each of the colleges really helped connect their careers and their academic disciplines. Um, to careers, you know, how does Chicago State uniquely approach business? How does Chicago State uniquely approach careers in education? Um, and really why, what are the average careers? What are some of the um? Research that's happening? What are some of the facilities that we uniquely have here at Chicago State to help get students there? And what you can see are some statistics here. We had total um with summer career Fridays, we, well, in total, we had about forty seven different events. But with summer career Fridays, each Friday, we featured um each academic college, including the graduate school. Um, honors college as well as adult integrated learning program. And those were incredibly fascinating to see. Um, and develop with the faculty. Um, but again, those were extremely well received. Um, each college approached it very differently. As you can imagine, business was very different than education, which was different than pharmacy. Um, as you think about how they each, you know, even teach differently. So that was fascinating to see. And what we have now is a video library of each of these sessions that we're looking to use in future recruitment. Um, endeavors as well. In total, we launched over forty seven virtual information sessions and we've had about thirteen sixty. One thousand three hundred and sixty registrants for each of those, um including um our supply chain management. As you know, we announced that new program over the summer as well. Um, another initiative that we have is our admissions blogs. Again, how do we let people know all of the great things that are happening behind? Our tree lined campus. There was tons of activity I was noticing, um but I, we had to think about ways that we can really. Again, how do we translate and articulate what's happening on campus to an audience so that it's more palatable and digestible for them, right? Um, and so you can see some of the admission blog topics that we have here. Um, we've had over seventeen, we're at seventeen blogs that we've posted so far. Um, our first blog went live in May twenty twenty and since then, we've had seventeen hundred views to these but blogs. Our three most popular blogs so far has been uh our summer open house recap from the open house that we had in July. Our navigating financial aid um blog that Ms. Rhonda Smith wrote us, wrote, wrote, wrote for us. Um, in support of helping students navigate to their financial aid award. Um, and then our enrollment related services, as you can see. Um, is listed there as well. Um, and that talks about the ways that the campus departments are available. Um, these two or three weeks um to help students with their last minute enrollment steps, whether it's academic advising, orientation. Register our BRSAR admissions, um as well as ways that students can get their IDs. And so those were the three most popular. Um, we're continuing with the goal of having at least three or four blogs per month, um as we continue to. Um, make this information available to students in a way that they can understand it. I think that is really the key. Um, U Chat, I talked about U Chat before. We launched this in April of twenty twenty. Since then, um, we've had about four hundred engagements. And I think that we suspected they would all be um new incoming students. Um, however, the platform allows uh visitors to our U Chat to let us know who they are. Um, and where they are in the process. And so um, the vast majority of them have been prospective students who are just, you know. I tell me more about your English major. Tell me more, a little bit more about your computer science major. I have questions about Rise Academy. Um, a hundred and eighty three of them were admitted students. Some of them were students checking on the status of their application. Um, again, we didn't have the ability for students to really just come into the office and ask questions, but U Chat really fit that. Um, bill ability uh very well. Some were parents, um eighty six of them were either members of. Be, um, we actually found a lot of counselors, school counselors using the platform, um as well as principals. And um, one of the things that's unique about this that I don't think we expected coming in, I think we expected students to jump on. Ask one question and leave. What we found out that these U Chats were actually dialogue, right? And so we had to create a staffing infrastructure that really supported us um chatting back and forth, you know. These were not just one question and you're in and out in thirty seconds. Um, a lot of these were really going back and forth, figuring out what the student was interested in. And in really doing some more deeper dialogues um virtually. And then how do we translate this from a conversation on U Chat to maybe a phone conversation or an email? Um, where we can extend beyond just U Chat. So that has been something that has been very helpful for us as well. Um, I'm sure you all are aware of Rise Academy. Um, this has proven to be incredibly supportive of making sure. Um, that we're helping first year students in for fall twenty twenty. Um, as you know, this is a year long retention um strategy. Um, extremely data driven, as I know that our colleagues in academic affairs and student affairs have looked at what are those traditional barriers? Um, that prevents students from being successful, not only nationwide, but at Chicago State University as well. Incredibly timing, particularly in two pandemics, as we can say. Um, but you can see here that um the op, the program offers a number of different things. I think. Um, Provost Roundtree and her team did a really good job of looking at what would prevent a student from enrolling this fall. And then how do we move, remove those barriers to really make sure that we're supporting students in a way that makes this seamless? Um, almost in a way that students can't refuse. And so um, we had a full tuition um offer. Um, to make sure that students do not have a balance at the end of their first year. They had an opportunity to take a three credit hour course, giving them a leg up. Um, technology issues we talked about earlier. Participants in Rise Academy did receive a personal laptop over the summer. Um, they also participate in extracurricular or co-curricular activities outside of just attending, attending that virtual class. Um, our colleagues in the Learning Assistance Center um and Student Affairs did a lot of cohort and community building. So the students can actually bond and get to know each other. They offered a number of different academic programs as well as workshop. But also these self discoveries that help them connect to, you know, why am I here? Sort of like these larger transformative conversations on. You know, helping them connect the importance of study skills and time management. Um, they also engaged in a number of different social activities outside of just your traditional academic and student affairs. But um, I know they participated in a TikTok talents. Um, they actually have a community on Facebook as well, where they have more of the laid back. More exciting and fun things to really replace what is missing from your traditional in-class um type of environment. So I would say this is a pretty comprehensive and holistic approach. Um, the ways that it really helped us and it really engaged students in those enrollment next steps. Earlier than they traditionally would have. We had three cohorts over the summer. Um. We're getting ready for two fall cohorts. Um, in total, we had a hundred and thirty five students participate in the Rise Academy program. Who are slated to begin with us in fall twenty twenty, which helps us um very well in support of getting to our new incoming first time freshman program. These were five weekend intensive courses and we're currently wrapping up our second cohort, but from the first cohort. Um, we did have a ninety percent successful completion rate, which we're incredibly proud of. Um, as students, we're not only navigating Rise Academy, some students are also working at the same time. Um, and so we're continuing to monitor the success rates of the additional cohorts and getting them registered for the fall. So I think I had twenty minutes. Um, that was um about where we are now. Looking at our future recruitment plans, some of the target markets we have here, um CPS, um, they actually break out networks. According to geographic territories. Some of our primary markets, if you can imagine, network sixteen and seventeen, that's south side Chicago. Um, while continuing to keep our primary market is fourteen and fifteen. Our target feeders, um our top feeders on traditional. Um, and historic numbers come from sixteen and seventeen. The bulk of our first time freshmen come from the south side of Chicago. And the bulk of our transfer students come from City Colleges of Chicago. Some emerging markets that we're looking to really grow from are Chicago private schools. Looking at how do we enhance our relationship with transfer, not only from four year institutions, um but also HBCUs. Um, but also Illinois four year institutions, students who might be here in our backyard. Might have transferred to another Illinois four year institution, but finding their way back to Chicago. Um, and looking to continue post secondary institution. Our exploratory markets, as you can see here, these are areas where we do not traditionally see students from. Um, but I do believe with some really carefully and intentional, intentional and strategic market segmentation. We can take profiles of students who are a good fit for Chicago State and then flip them into some of these exploratory markets. Um, particularly looking at larger urban areas, um where we have um students who meet our current profile of students. Um, and really making some very segmented marketing um and communication campaigns. Um, to really make sure that we're on their radar moving forward. Some of our future recruitment plans, I think that we looked at the student characteristics in Dr. Welch's um. Uh, presentation, um but also considering the context, some opportunity populations that we're looking to grow and create some of those segmented communication plans. Um, is our visiting students, our students at large, looking to increase um our black male population, particularly working with the African American. Male Resource Center, um to making sure that our campus is more uh demographically balanced by gender. Um, we understand and know that the Latin X population continues to grow in the Chicago area. Um, so we're looking at launching a number of different bilingual publications. We do have a bilingual staff member here. Um, and offering a number of information sessions that are bilingual as well. Um, looking to grow our first time freshmen. How are we looking to do that? Um, again, looking at leveraging our honors program, moving into private schools a little bit more. Um, and increasing our dual enrollment and our partnerships um with um schools here in the local area. Um, some initiatives that we've done internally um is looking at creating specialties for enrollment specialists. Um, really quick, um some, one person might be focused on our customer service experience. Here on campus as an in-house counselor and campus tours. One specifically focuses on transfer. Another looks at marketing and the ways that we're using data. Another one looks at virtual and recruitment. We talked about our Latin X specialty as well. Um, looking at our special populations such as dual enrollment, veterans, how are we engaging adult learners? So we have a structure that now supports those specialties, assigning specific territories to our um particular enrollment specialists. And what are those goals? You know, we know what our goal. You know, if we know what our goal is for new incoming students, how many applications does this particular enrollment specialist need to bring in in order for them to hit their goal from their area? We're looking to take our blogs from a written format to more of a video format where we're really speaking in a more sixty-second to two-minute, in a more social media, Instagram-type of way. Looking at taking our virtual information session and expanding that and enhancing that to virtual tours. And also looking at making sure that transfer students are aware of the ways that their credits will transfer to Chicago State by way of leveraging the Transphirology tool that does exactly that for us. And City Colleges Chicago, City Colleges of Chicago heavily leans on that platform. And continuing our appointment-based advising sessions for students. We currently see two students on half-hour appointments, and there's a signup process for students to be able to do that with us. So that is a lot. I think I am right at twenty minutes, but I am happy to answer any questions that you all may have as I give up presenter status and transition to my colleague, Ms. Rhonda Smith, who will talk a little bit more about financial aid, and she will be coming up next. But any questions for me in the interim?
Thank you, Dr. Gooden. I, I just had a quick, we're running over time, so I just wanted everyone, you know, if that's okay, we'll just keep on going. I just want to make sure Dr. Putlory had time to also present his information. So we're already running over time, but I just, I just wanted to make sure that was okay.
Well, how much more time do you have, Dr. Welch? Because I only have Dr. Smith next on the, so you said Dr. Putlory is supposed to present as well?
I think on our agenda, it was the, our enrollment management team and then also Dr. Putlory for graduate school. So I don't know if I just have a different version of the agenda, but I just wanted to be cognizant of that.
I understand, but how much more time do you need is really the question I'm asking you.
I think Rhonda could take about ten more minutes. I know she has some important information regarding our financial aid for students, so she can.
And Dr. Putlory is gonna take?
I can finish in ten minutes.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, we, this is important information, we want to hear it, but I, you know, we do have other things to do and other people coming in. So I just wanted to get some idea of how much more you thought. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Gooden?
I just had one quick question, if you have this data. You stated that across all of the virtual events that were held for recruitment, there were thirteen hundred sixty registrations. How many of those resulted in actual attendees? I can't hear you.
I know, right? Absolutely, we did have about a forty-three percent attendance rate, so you're looking at about six hundred attendees overall.
And then was there, so that, that is low. If thirteen sixty registered, that means that they were interested. Was there any follow-up with the, the rest of the individuals that registered and did not attend?
Absolutely, that is a great question, yes. We had the ability both in advance. Keeping in mind, it's really difficult to get, you know, show rate on a virtual engagement platform. If you think of how many webinars we sign up for and then don't have the opportunity to make it to it. But we did send communications when a student registers, they get a confirmation. They get a two-day in-advance reminder, as well as a reminder one hour beforehand. And then for those students who did not actually attend, we did follow up with that particular student in an email. It was about an hour after they did not attend, and they would receive the link to then sign up for additional webinars as well as connecting them to next steps as it related to that particular topic. So if they had signed up for College of Business and didn't make it, we would then direct them to ways they can still interact with the College of Business and sign up for additional information sessions.
It's actually fifteen nineteen as of today morning.
Sorry?
It's actually fifteen nineteen as of today morning, not thirteen hundred.
Okay, regardless of how much it is, I just want to make sure that our focus is on capturing those who show interest in the university because registration is, is nice to know, but I'm more interested in how many individuals we actually engage. So when you share this information, instead of just giving us the registration, can you also let us know how many of those registrations actually resulted in us reaching a student, a prospective student, and engaging with the student? That number is more important to me than the actual registration. So having both of those shared regularly will be helpful.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
The question I have, Dr. Gooden, is I noticed on the org chart that Dr. Welch presented, you have a lot of openings. So I, I don't know how you're going, what's the plan to fill those openings? And do, I don't know how you do the work. She moved it pretty quickly, and I haven't had a chance to go back and look at it, but it looked like you got like one or two enrollment specialists. So I don't know, how are you gonna do all the stuff you want to do? And what's the timeframe to recruit those people and what's the plan to do that? Because it's an ambitious plan, and it sounds great, but you don't have anybody to execute it. I don't know how you're gonna do what you're gonna do.
Absolutely, I think that is a great observation and incredibly valid. One of the things that we are doing is we, looking to get additional leadership in our unit. So we do have an Associate Director of Admissions posting, posted right now to assist with those outreach efforts. We do have two enrollment specialists, but the great thing is the two that we have are incredibly capable, creative, technologically adept. So as we look at our shift to virtual and recruitment, they've been able to pick up on a lot of these things that we've been doing incredibly fast. And so we have, I believe, three more positions should be posted this week. We did have to pivot around getting, you know, the first day of school. And so I'm literally conducting phone interviews today in support of filling some of those positions. So you're absolutely right, but we're continuing to just assess what our needs are and remain flexible to try and get students in.
All right. To answer, also to answer your question, Chair, we did provide some support for Dr. Gooden this summer. We had two of our affinity groups, leads coming over to help with enrollment-related activities. Our lead from our African-American Male Resource Center and our lead from our Latino Resource Center assisted with enrollment activities this summer. I actually think the vacancies have created an opportunity for Dr. Gooden to bring in better, 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 better staff. We, I, I hate to see people go, but I think it's an opportunity for him to really, to bring in more talent.
And his own team, which I think is important. All right, Rhonda, you are up.
Okay, thank you. If I could please have the ability to present? Thank you. And so we've admitted the students, and we want them to be able to be successful from a financial standpoint as well. And so I would just like to give a brief overview of our student demographic. Oh, I'm sorry. We have for the fall two thousand twenty semester, one thousand six hundred and seventy-three of our students who are enrolled, so that's new and continuing students, have completed a FAFSA. Forty percent of those students who completed the FAFSA have a zero EFC, meaning that they are eligible to receive full Pell Grant. Thirty-three percent of the, of the FAFSA completers have been awarded MAPS. And the adjusted gross income, the median adjusted gross income for our student population is nineteen thousand eighty-eight dollars. And so our student demographic is a high-need student population with minimal ability to contribute to the cost of education. Just an overview of the past few years, the maximum Pell Grant eligibility in eighteen nineteen was six thousand ninety-five dollars. For nineteen twenty, it's six thou, it was six thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars. And for this year, the federal government has increased to six thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars. So again, of our student population, the majority are zero EFC, and so they will receive that maximum Pell Grant. The thing we do want to keep in mind for our transfer students, because we do have such a large population of transfer students, is that many students come to us having used or exhausted much of their Pell Grant by the time they come to Chicago State University. The percentage of MAPS grant recipients has decreased just a little bit over the past two, three years. And what we're doing is really encouraging students, making sure that they are aware of the deadline date to have their FAFSA done in order to be considered for MAPS grant. And so really encouraging them to get their FAFSAs done, if not on the first day, as soon as possible after the first day, October first of each year, that a student can complete a FAFSA in order to be considered eligible for MAPS grant. Our median adjusted gross income has increased over the past three years. However, the students are not finding a way to cover the cost of their tuition and fees. In terms of student loans for fall two thousand twenty, we're anticipating that two thousand five hundred sixty-five students.
And are those, yeah, income numbers, are those for like the students themselves or their families, or what does that mean?
So this, the subsidized and unsubsidized loans are for the students specifically. The graduate, excuse me, the parent loans are for the parents, but we didn't provide. I could get that number for you, but I didn't provide that number for today.
No, my question was median income data on the previous slide, it's like nineteen thousand. So is that, is that for a student's family, or is that for the student themselves?
I'm sorry, yes, that is for the, that is for the family. So it may have some income from the student, but that is for the family as a whole.
Thanks.
You're welcome. For a total enrollment, we're anticipating six million dollars, almost seven million dollars borrowed for this year, this academic year. We have not yet reported to IPEZ. That information will be reported in the upcoming months. But for the two thousand eighteen nineteen award year, the average borrowing for undergraduate students was nine thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars, which was down a little bit from the prior year. In an effort to assist students with their outstanding balances and to increase enrollment, we have increased our scholarships that we're awarding. So for this year, the colleges were given the ability to choose the students for their scholarships. And so thirty-eight percent of College of Business new students enrolled for the fall two thousand twenty semester are receiving scholarships. Thirteen percent of students from the College of Education and forty-nine percent of students from the College of Arts and Sciences are receiving scholarships for fall two thousand twenty. Of the students who are, will be residing in housing, twenty-nine percent of those students will receive a scholarship from the foundation to cover the cost of their room. And then fifteen percent of our transfer students will receive book scholarships. Other ways we're finding to assist our high-need students, our work-study program in two thousand nineteen twenty, thankfully, the Department of Education, even under COVID, did allow us to continue to pay our students throughout, through the spring two thousand twenty semester. And our students make nine dollars and twenty-five cents per hour. Two hundred and fifty-eight students were employed as work-study students. We have developed a micro grant, and so students pay a small fee, twenty dollars per semester that goes into a fund that we then use to assist students who are close to graduation. And so for fall two thousand twenty, a student who has a balance of six hundred and fifty dollars or less and is close to graduation within three semesters of a graduation, we can use that grant to assist with their costs. We're, we're encouraging students to go to other resources to make sure that they're aware of what they borrowed, of what they've used in terms of grants and loans. And so we constantly direct them to the studentaid.gov website, which summarizes their information for them. It shows them where they've attended school, what funds they've used at that school, and then what funds they have remaining to continue their education. We also direct them to outside sources to apply for scholarships. Dr. Gooden talked about our financial literacy webinars, as well as Dr. Welch. And so we just want to make sure that they are managing their loan debt, knowing how that affects their credit, encouraging smart borrowing. We will be hosting a webinar on how academic progress affects financial aid eligibility because often students don't seem to realize that if they're not doing well in their courses, that they can lose their ability to receive financial aid from the federal government. And so we are collaborating with academic advising to ensure that students remain on track, that they're taking the right courses, that they know how many semesters they have left to graduate, and that they know how much financial aid they have remaining to cover those, those semesters. In, in, under COVID, we have had some challenges, but we've come up with solutions to cover those challenges. Technology was a major issue, you know, making sure that the staff has VPN access so that they can perform their work from home. So they're able to access the system, update student accounts to show that documents have been submitted, complete verification processes, we are able to do that remotely. Because the families are not necessarily able to assist in terms of money, being able to help pay, pay for classes, ensuring that students, again, are aware of outside sources of aid. So for example, we received a scholarship application from a City of Chicago organization. We distributed that virtually to the students, as well as encouraging them to search public companies for scholarships on their own websites. Another challenge is the student's ability to submit documents. We have worked really hard. Our, our banner support person, Dr. Aviles, has been great in, in creating documents for us so that students are able to fill in the document online and submit the document to campus. So for example, with the satisfactory academic progress, students have to obtain more than one signature. They have to obtain a signature from their academic dean, a signature from their academic advisor, a signature from financial aid. They're able to obtain all of those signatures online and submit the form. They don't have to come to campus. And then, so we're utilizing our resources in terms of Zoom, GoToMeeting, Microsoft Teams, to make sure that we can remain in contact with one another, as well as we can use those, those venues to interact with the students as well. Were there any questions regarding the financial aid information or?
Any other questions for Ms. Smith?
So the nine thousand dollar debt figure, is that, that's at the conclusion of their studies? Is what the average student has?
That is for the year, so it would be that number times four. That's the average.
Thirty-six thousand dollars in debt, which is twice the annual income of their family.
So many of our students use the student loan. Many of our students are housing insecure, and they use the student loans to pay rent, to live on campus, to pay the residence hall, to purchase books. So the Pell Grant and the MAPS Grant, if a student with, a student with a zero EFC who's receiving, hasn't used up their funding, they're receiving full Pell, full MAPS, that will cover the cost of their tuition. They then borrow the loans for rent, books, outside expenses related to education.
And are they getting any private loans, or is it all government loans?
In general, the private loans are the graduate-level students and the international students. The undergraduate students are using the federal loan.
This is why financial literacy is really key as part of the process for students entering college. It's because we really need to make sure they understand that when they're borrowing, what that means.
Yeah, many, many times, I'm sorry, Dr. Welch, yes. Many times the discussion that I'm having with students is, do they really need to borrow the full amount? Is the subsidized portion of the loan enough to give them what they need? Especially if they're just looking for money for books. I highly encourage them to only borrow just enough for their books. I remind them that with the subsidized loan, if they pay it off before it goes into repayment, that they're not paying any interest. So that's where we're providing the advising to our students to ensure that they know what they're borrowing, that they know how much they're borrowing, and why.
Other questions? All right, Dr. Putlory, you're up.
I need to have this shared.
Can you see the screen?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Jha. Good morning, trustees. Good morning, President Scott. Morning, Provost. Uh, my name is Debbie Portlory, the Dean of Graduate School. It's actually the School of Graduate and Professional Studies. I came to Chi- Chicago State in August 20, 2002, that's about 18 years now. My first half of my professional life, I spent in Jamaica, the University of West Indies as a chair and the Dean's Council, et cetera. Uh, I'm a professor of biology by profession. And my research specialties include plant biology, horticulture. I'm sure some of you probably remember I spoke in the um, when we had the marijuana symposium here, we talked about it. I also have a lot of research grants and supervise a lot of graduate students and everybody else. So what I'm going to do is, in the interest of time, I'm going to quickly, quickly go and so just a little bit information about the graduate school. We work differently, graduate school, I have two different hats to wear. One of them is academic hat, the other one is admissions and recruitment and enrollment and retention hat. So both of them have to work together for graduate school, unlike undergraduate admissions, et cetera. So that's why these are different. And the policies influence, one policy influences the other. Admission policies influence the academic policies and vice versa. So we go hand in hand. Um, so we have a lot of programs, so we have 24 degree programs, but we have about fif- more than 50 options. Just to give you an example, for example, psychology has two programs. Biology, we say biology, but they have four options. So each one of them have their own admission criteria. This is different. And then we have 11 certificate programs eligible for financial aid. We have another 15 which are not eligible for a financial aid. We tell the students, you, if you register those, you don't get the financial aid. But they, sometimes they may be interested for their job, so they will register it. And we have, on the top of it, we have endorsement for the teachers, et cetera. A lot of students come to us as a non-degree. They want to explore the graduate education first or just take a course or something to improve their uh qualifications. Again, all of them have individual admission criteria. I'm mentioning this because in the next slide, you will see the process. Again, the admission process is slightly different. Uh, when the students apply online, I'll talk about the online application in a minute. We just almost finalized our, our, our online application process and we are happy to tell you that, that works wonderful for us. And then any application, when the students apply online, the graduate school staff, uh, I only have two staff actually who do this work and then one technical person. And then graduate school staff review the application to see if all the things are there. The transcripts are there, the recommendation letters are there, the GRE if they need this course. International students, they have the TOEFL or anything. Then we send it to the program after we calculate the GPA and everything. The program advisors, most of the time they are faculty. We have a few professional, but most of this is reviewed by faculty. They review the application process to see if the student is uh ready for admission into their programs. Once they review, then it comes back to me as the dean and I make sure that they followed all the rules and regulations and compliance with it. Um, the, once I approve it, then it goes to final review for the grad school staff. They will look at it one more time to make sure everything is in order. Then they will admit or not admit the student, they will take it, the decision is uh informed to the students. Once the student is notified, since we are in CRM right now, that has to go to the banner for students to register. So, so that's the last step. That usually happens within 24 hours after that. So these are the, um, to make it very simple, you saw the highlighted numbers, this is the graduate numbers. I'm just looking for today's numbers actually. So you can see that we are up by 20% over last year, so I'm happy to report to you. This is how we look like if you put a chart on it. These are the final numbers for 18 and 19. My final numbers are not yet there, here. I'm only here for one year as in this position. So these numbers are not final, we are still, people are still reg- uh, enrolling right now. So this number might slightly go up a little bit more. So if you look at the graduate school enrollment by college, a three-year trend, college of arts and science is doing okay, reasonably okay. Business, of course, we expect the increase because last year was the first time we enrolled and this year I expect them to go up. College of Education is doing much better this year. They have numbers increased. Health science is doing more or less okay, and this is graduate student at large at a non-degree. So doctoral students, we have gone down a little bit this year. So we are working on that too. So what did we do to increase our numbers this year? As I told you, I came to this position as an interim dean in one year ago and then I became the regular in July 1st, actually, this July 1st. So one of the things, when I came in one year ago, I concentrated on making sure the online application process, this Salesforce, Target, XCRM process works. So we spent unlimited hours to make sure, as I told you in the beginning, we have fif- 56 or something admission criteria and we have to program every single one of them for everything. So we did that and so when then we had to train the faculty, advisors, chairs, staff in the new technology because there's no point in if we get the admission and faculty don't know how to review it, or the staff don't know how to review it. So we spent time, three times every single person we trained, this is about 90 people, we trained every single one of them three times so that they are familiar with the process so they can use the uh system. One of the advantages of that system is communication, so we can use this CRM to do chat line. We were the first ones to start the chat line before, then emails, text messages. You can do all of that in CRM. You don't need different platforms and different people. One person can look at those things. So that was one of the advantages, developing those programs. Uh, then we also changed the flexible deadlines, so from March 15th to July 15th. We did this even before the COVID and then it actually helped us because we have the COVID and then both the online process and the flexible deadlines helped us in the COVID time. Of course, graduate programs cannot survive without the active cooperation of the programs and departments. Uh, I'm going to skip a few for, so that, um, on the, for the time being. So this is a summary of my time. It's not developed yet, but I'm looking at what I need to do for the next one year, three years, five years. We have a few more programs which should go online, like our certificates and endorsement, we haven't done that yet. So I'm hoping by the end of this year, everything will be online and paperless more or less in three years, including graduation applications and everything here. We have a great opportunity to get the graduate school more. Right now, we are about one-third of it. I think I have about 900 student out of the 2,400 students so far we have. So you can see graduate school is a large part of the university. And as I said, we increased it 20% this year, but that will come down to 10% when we calculate everything else later on. So this wants, this is the one I will just concentrate on. Holistic approach, because a lot of African-American students, Latinx students who, depending on just GRE and GPA and all of those is not really good. So we are started moving to holistic approach, reducing the GPA to 2.75. Most of the programs eliminated GRE requirement. We are also looking at, we, the Provost approved and then we are giving competency-based credits. What does that mean? That means if somebody is working already for last three, four years in a, in a counseling or a teacher's side or something like that, that experience should count for something. So we will give credits for those. The department will evaluate the experience and tell us how many credits they want to give us. Then we, they, those students will get, they can get up to one semester equivalent of credit. That means the time for graduation also will be reduced for those students. So that will actually help us because students will feel that their experience is respected and then they get something out of it, not just their job. So that's one of the things we are looking at. Al- these, the rest of them are academic in one sense, so layer degrees means they can, they don't have to do a degree at one go, then they can take some courses in psychology, some courses in biology. Maybe they can get a neurophysiology degree later on some other time, just to give you an examples. We're also looking at professional masters for gainful employment. Most importantly, we are looking at micro credentials and badges because graduate education is changing. Not everybody wants a degree, not everybody, uh, company needs a master's degree. They just need some proficiency or competency in certain areas. Those are micro credits and badges after that. So we are looking at developing those. We already talked to the departments and we are discussing them, hopefully in a year or two, we start seeing these things offered at Chicago State. I'm going to skip these for, in the interest of the time. This is the one we again, we are going to finalize the CRM definitely for that one. Uh, for international students, uh, I want to thank the board for uh, uh, reducing the fees for international students. We got about eight students, I think, after we announced that transport from, from uh Ohio and then your, our own Chicago's universities, a few of them who would not have been otherwise here. So they did come here after that fees were reduced. Uh, this is where we are looking at uh east, well, eastern, west African countries, Caribbean, south and southeast Asia. We're also looking at H visa holders, those of you who are not familiar with. H visa holders are considered as residents of Illinois if they are living here for more than a year. But we have not targeted them, they are, we are treating them as international student. They should be treated as residents. There's a large population right now, so we are going to target them this year to see if we can get more students. Uh, last part of it is retention. We want to look at when does the attrition generally occur? Program handbooks are bit old, we have to revise them and we are tracking progress. So far, that is the domain of the programs. We are not doing that in the graduate school before I came in. So we're going to look at doing that too. But also trying to look at the program culture. There is a tendency in Chicago State, I lived here long enough to know that. Uh, they keep postponing, even though master's degree is two years, a lot of students take more than four, five, six years. We want to see why it is going on for six years and we want to see the culture. They don't have six years, they have two years. We need to change that culture. But we are also not celebrating the program, graduate program. So in this case, I would like to thank the Provost and the President. Both of them have seen uh the importance of graduate school. And then they started giving importance and then putting some money into the graduate school and then encouraging everybody uh, the programs to look at graduate programs and giving me a little bit free hand to do, change some of the things. So I really thank the President and Provost for seeing that graduate school is important. Again, as I told you, we are one-third, if not more, we are 903 out of 2,400 students right now. So I'll skip those. Uh, this is all I want to say, because we know because of the COVID, things can change rapidly. It is my intention, my job to make sure we put systems in place we, so that we can move very quickly if there are some change in national, regional, international trends. And we should be in a position to bring the change as quickly as possible. So I was trying to hurry up because of the time, so thank you very much for listening to me. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer.
I am sorry that you had to rush, but thank you. Do we have any questions for Dr. Putlory? All right. Thank you. Uh, we appreciate it.
Professor.
You were, you were so good. Um, uh, all right, and uh, thank you, Dr. Welch and Dr. Gooden and Rhonda and Smith for your presentation as well. Very thorough. Obviously, we had a lot of questions, which is why it went along. It's a critically important topic to the school. Um, and so, uh, we appreciate your taking the time and the detail. Um, we may, as people have time to go through the presentations and think of them, have additional questions. And I think, you know, the board should feel free to reach out directly if those questions come up. All right, uh, we are supposed to take a 10-minute break. My suggestion would be is, um, uh, Director Welch on the line, Bonnie, is he in the room?
Yes, he's on the line.
All right, if everyone would be, Chief Lo, sorry. If, if everyone is okay with it, my suggestion would be that we just barrel through and then uh, um, take a break for lunch. Is that all right with everyone? Okay, I don't hear you complaining, objecting, so we're going to do that. So Chief Welch, the floor is yours.
Hello all, my name is Eddie Welch. Uh, thank you all for your time, Chair Andrew Zop. Appreciate the opportunity. Uh, President Scott, thank you as well and all the trustees. Um, I'll present my uh presentation here. It's uh, it's an overview of pretty much of what we've been doing here at Chicago State University and a little about myself as well. Um, a little bit my, a little bit about myself, I've been here uh in law enforcement for 34 years, been in law enforcement for 34 years. 15 of those years really in leadership roles, been in Chicago Police Department. And three of the years of being the chief of the Department of the Bureau of Internal Affairs. Uh, from there, I have a master's degree from Loyola, a bachelor's from North Park and started my education at Illinois State University. I have certification in the uh, called PERF, the Police Executive Research Forum, uh, Northwestern Traffic Institute, uh, Chicago Police Executive Development Program, and NMS, and also A to Certified Protection Professional. In this presentation, you hear a lot of acronyms, but I'll have most of them defined uh in this uh presentation. And here, this is just like a little overview, I look at myself, it's that uh, uh, have a transformational leadership style that, you know, that focuses on change, goals, personnel development, and achieving, maintaining the priorities of universities. That's primarily what I've been doing since I've been here, is to work with the uh department personnel, uh, provide training and then to adjust to those che- changes that law enforcement has been brought over the past uh few years. Chicago State University, uh, receives the authority through the uh Illinois Compiled Statutes, uh, 110 ILCS 660. And it gives the Chicago Police Department the uh ability to uh operate as a police department within the state of Illinois. This is where we get our uh authority from. Again, our vision is uh serves the university community, commit to create a safe environment for learning. And we try to stay within, uh, we, we will stay within the mission of the university itself, overall mission and the overall vision of the uh university also. Our vision is to dedicate to duty and that we are, hold ourselves accountable for our actions uh, and by the university. Our core values, again, safety, excellence, respect, valor, integrity, compassion and ethical. Service is where we are operating from, from the, the Chicago State University Police Department. Uh, I'll be talking real briefly about the organizational chart, hiring process, the CLERI Act, statistics, calls for service, training and mass communication, critical incidents, operations improvements and action steps. It seems like a lot, but it's not going to take as long as it sounds. So we have 29, I told employees, 20 are sworn. So 20 of our uh people here, including myself, are actually sworn within the state of Illinois as peace officers. Uh, we have three telecommunicators, dispatchers, and then we have one administrative aide and also get the locksmith coming out of my department as well. We also have a, a part-time um hiring of one dispatcher, one administrative assistant and two desk attendants. And they're only used as needed uh based on the uh demands from the university. Here's a typical hiring process for our officers. There's a written exam. Uh, there's a power test that you have to pass as well. After passing those two processes, then you go to a hall board. And then from there, they would uh have an interview here at Chicago State University where we accept or reject their uh, their hiring. And then they'll be assigned to a training academy. There's over four training academies across the state. We typically use uh Chicago Police Department's academy for our training. Our sergeants here, uh, they require 60 hours, written exam, uh, they pass or fail. And then they also are required to have to attend hall board, from that hall board, we get the internal, uh, we get the top highest three scores with internal candidates having the first pres- uh preference. And then they read their accepted or rejected from the uh Chicago State University uh interview process. Here are just some, some of the statistics over the years, 2017, 2018. The 2019 statistics, uh, we're currently working on those and those would be due. And those would be due October first to be submitted for the Clery Act. So we have another month before those are required to be posted. But these, these statistics are posted on our site. And they give a kind of little bit of idea of what's happening. But I, when I look at these stats, one, some of the things I have noticed since I've been here was that a lot of the incidents were occurring, were not necessarily occurring with our students. They were usually occurring with either employees or someone that comes onto our campus that is not a student, but the incident happens on our campus. So we, we experienced some of those incidents particularly. One of the focus that I had since I've been here was we have students here on campus twenty four seven. So we wanted to make sure we intervene sooner than later so that we prevent and reduce these violations from taking place. So the years, the numbers have been reducing and since pandemic, having those students here, the numbers really reduced, probably going to two thousand nineteen. So typically what police officers do here, their calls for service, they answer right about the average of about twenty four thousand calls a year. Most of those are building checks, lockouts, staff, forget the keys, someone needs to get into a door, things like that. Campus checks, that's thirty percent. And those things are all recorded in our dispatch, but they were not at the time recorded in electronic fashion. We're working on that now. These are all handwritten, recorded information. So going into the next semester, this semester coming up now, we'll be going into a new mobile app for our mass communications called Cover, K U B R R. It's pronounced Cover. And here we will have no time tips to be issued from your cell phone, safe walk, where it's a virtual walk with, also can one of our dispatch persons can actually see you actually walking if you want to do it that way. It automatically gives you an SOS response so that you can respond if you just need help. It will figure your GPS location on campus, so you don't have to specifically say where you are and that'll track it from there. We have, we're coming up with mobile panic buttons that will be on your lapel or your key ring. Those are in the process of being drawn up now. Once we get those, we'll be passing those out to our students and staff on campus. So typically here at Chicago State, since we are a law enforcement agency within the state of Illinois, we have a lot of training, a lot of training that has to be done. One of the first things that we've done and I've had the opportunity was to to approve our operation manual. We do that through LexiPo. LexiPo is a service that, that we pay for that provides up to date policies within the state of Illinois law, since that's the law that we follow and that's where we operate from. Our training comes from Illinois Law Enforcement Training Standard Board, and these are mandated trainees that's required by the state. In those trainees, they're conducted through the northeast multi-regional training we call D mark. And those in-service training, annual trainees can include law updates, civil rights, human rights, constitutional policing. There's a yearly qualification, firearm qualification, use of deadly force. And CPR and the AED in the first state is done upon certification typically every two to three years. And then there's a mental health crisis intervention training that a number of officers have as well. Currently, we'll be working with Heart Grove Hospital. We'll be sending one of our officers to their peer support program. That's another mandated program that state police departments require. And we have one officer be scheduled in the fall to attend Heart Grove Hospital for that. Last year, we had CPD, Chicago Police Department come on campus. They provided domestic violence, criminal sexual assault training that all of my officers here obtained as well. It's, it's also a state mandated course. So sometimes when we can team with Chicago Police Department, they have the same requirements and mandated training. We can jump into some of those programs we can do so. Oftentimes, a lot of the D mark training is full because it's, it's for every law enforcement agency across the state. So if you don't have your own training academy, sometimes it can be difficult to get assigned those, those courses. And also we work with the civil service system down in Springfield, down in Champaign. They also provide the workplace development and employee assistance program. We have some training with them. We just conducted a training at U I C just before the pandemic took place. And then here at Chicago State, we work for the NIM system, NIMs that's fed out of FEMA and come out of the Department of Homeland Security. So we're on the same standards that will be across the state and across the country. Where incident to man, when we deal with active shooters, love, Patience and Donnie and Dolphie P P Es as well. Then we also work with the behavioral assessment and intervention team. That's for a student in crisis, disorder in crisis on campus. And there's a team of employees that work with that with the counseling system. We work with that as well and they're trained to do that. Critical incidents and crisis management. Well, you know, since we've been in the pandemic, we've we definitely have been handling crisis management here. And I want to thank the president for her leadership in this area. So we've been able to really make a lot of leeway relatively fast within three months that sometimes takes quite a bit of time to do. But it was actually done quite swiftly. So with the emergency operations, we deal everything from the winter vortex we had a couple of years ago, civil disorder, man-made type of operations, accidental, there's the power outage, things like that, a busted water main, things like that. And so we kind of use pretty much the same type of operational plan that we're using now. It's just a different phase of it, which means that everyone may not be involved. A lot of times everyone may be involved. It just depends on the scenario that we deal with. So here we do tabletop exercises every year. We'd be doing one again with the executive management team. We also provide the information on where to get this training as well. We do active shooter training. Our, it's very simple. It's run, hide and fight and shelter in place. Run is oftentimes if someone's far enough away from the incident, they believe they can safely get away, they'll do that. If they cannot do that, they would just shelter or hide in place. Or last resort, you have to fight. That's if someone comes on them and that's the training that's being given by the FEMA at this time. We also go with suspicious packaging and workplace violence and fire drills. Those things we all do here and that's what we work on, on an annual basis. So far as operations concerned, we typically have about three or four officers working per shift with one supervisor typically every day. So our first thing is deterrence. That's basically our presence. Our presence, I believe, means a lot. And I've listened to the concerns over the couple of years I've been here. And those concerns is presence. So we try to increase that as much as possible. Try to increase our engagement with the university community as well. And also if it goes to our blue light initiative that we'll be working on later, as you'll see, as one of my updates down the road. Detection. We have over about a hundred cameras across campus that we do monitor, but they are not monitored on a regular basis. They typically are used for investigative purposes. The average person typically can only probably view about six or seven cameras at any one time. So having a hundred cameras is, is not totally where we can monitor them all the time, but we have the technology to record and come back and use it as investigative tools. Plus the technology and cameras now have changed, so we, we put a couple of new cameras around campus. One camera now equates to four cameras with today's technology. So that number of a hundred will be easily down to maybe about forty cameras across campus easily once the new technology is put in place. Access control. We're currently working on a process with access control, which we definitely need nowadays because of the coronavirus. And ensuring that folks that, on our bus, folks are not in the wrong location or students are not where they're not supposed to be. And then we can monitor as well for contact tracing down the road if we have to determine and notify folks that have, may have been in contact with someone that tested positive. And our response, which is key, is with our personnel. That is the, the most important thing that we have to do to ensure that we have a timely response to any calls for service. So operations, what we kind of use here, now, most of these things have just been put in place since I've been here. And again, I'd like to thank President Scott for this. She's really given me the ability to to step out and have some of these things put in place. But we have computer aided dispatch. It's operated twenty four seven. We have three telecommunicators twenty four seven. And we have one part time telecommunicated whenever those other ones are not present. So we, we've been in operation throughout this entire pandemic. And we've been fully operational during that time. Again, we talked about the cameras, how many we have operating here. We have a handheld device where I can actually real time look at cameras from my phone or any kind of mobile device. We also work on a case management system, which should be just about complete right now. We're just waiting to get our tough books put into place where officers now will be completing reports from a pad, a tough pad. And does not require them to come into the station to do reports. They can do them right there on the scene. And also, also compile all the data from those reports. Again, panic buttons, we've always had panic buttons across campus. There was twenty five that's active. And we have twenty pending that we're going to be putting to lecture halls across the campus that would be utilized. In addition to the personal panic buttons that would be in place as well. We talked a little bit about access control. That'll be a very main entrance to every building on campus. And that process again is moving forward. And then we talk about cover and our blue lights. Again, we've got one hundred sixty one acres, thirteen buildings. We utilize it by bicycle patrol, foot patrol. We have residence halls. That's when our main focus, the metro station, the parking attendant booths, to collect money sometimes at those booths. And then also we monitor the shuttle bus also. We have a desk attendant now assigned over at the Cook Administration Building in the lobby. Just they're just there to observe, report and assist however they could. Especially now, since a lot of people need assistance, we just don't want people roaming around. We just want to try to assist them as much as possible. Go from there. We have a lot of events. This year, of course, we have been reduced substantially with the but we'll be looking forward to getting back involved this hopefully next year. We have a lot of other partner agencies we work with, CPS, A one, Chicago Public Schools, Park District, Happy Park, CTA from here to the red line and then with the bus turnaround here on campus. And also C F D, they come out and assist us in our fire drills. We just had one in October last year, so we'll be having a good one again October this year. We also have one memorandum of understanding with CPD. They, they provide us with our final statistics, criminal statistics. Just in case whenever someone may decide to go straight to Chicago Police Department and make a case report against Chicago State, oftentimes we may not see it. So if we don't see it, we have an understanding with Chicago Police Department to provide us with the final stats that we do issue to Clery. And then also we're in partnership with the Illinois State Police. Again, during this crisis, we've been having, we were having weekly conversations with Illinois State Police. Until now, we just, it's just as needed. We also work with Illinois Law Enforcement and Law Assistance. What that is basically is our mutual agreements. So if in case it came to a major emergency that where I did not have the personnel to work on this campus, we do have mutual agreements from other universities to come and assist us if we, if needed from the state of Illinois. Then also the, we're part of the Illinois Campus Law Enforcement Administration. They kind of provide a lot of the objectives that we should be following and we follow through them. And the last part is the Illinois Associated Chiefs of Police. We, we will be using them. They will be doing our accreditation. Once we get to that, that stage, basically accreditation would mean is that we will take our policies and procedures, have someone review them and see in fact that we are adhering to those policies and procedures here at Chicago State Police Department. So our improvement, we'll be having five new leased vehicles coming in from Ford. They're hybrids, so part electric, part gas. We talked about the Dell Tough Pass, that's for our reporting from out in the field. Omnago is our case management system that we also be utilizing here on campus. We talked about the Exact Mobile. That's where I play to watch all the cameras from here. Mass communications that just do cover. Our panic switches as links and our policy procedures, LexiPo. And also we work with Hush Blackwell on an annual security report. This is our Clery Act and this is where we provide those statistics to them on an annual basis to include into our annual security report for Chicago State University. We also have an annual emergency operations plan. I work with I E M, Illinois Emergency Management Association. We provide that plan to them every year. That will also be provided this October to I E M. And also again, I like to thank the university for the website. A lot of these things now are on our website. We continue to update it to make a lot more of these things transparent so so folks can really take a look and see what we're doing here at Chicago State. And here's a, here's a picture of our station outdoors. Did you see door number four? Door number four is new. So door number four used to be parking. Now we use it as for our customer service entry. And there we would allow students to come in. They want to make exchanges. They want to pick up food or if they do something from a crate list, who knows? But we, we have that facility available to them. They need that assistance. Or they need to wait somewhere for someone to pick them up, while we'll have this available for our students. We just created this space. I think it's going to turn out real well. To the left, this is our communications area. This is where our telecommunicators work. We have all our computers here. We have leads. We connect to Illinois State Police. We have our cameras, panic switches, our emergency alarms. Everything comes out of this office here and this man twenty four seven. To the right is our roll call room and we're in our training room and we can reconfigure this so that we can have a lot of space for more training. This is just a mockup of the new vehicles. If you look at some of our old vehicles and the new vehicles, the new vehicles look remarkably, I, I like them. So I think it's just a preference, but I do, it does give us an identity for Chicago State University. So going forward, the action plans going into this semester, again, we're going to improve our efficiencies with the allocated budget that we have for the fiscal year twenty twenty one. I think we've been very efficient. We've kind of eliminated a lot of our middle management at this point. So we, we should do pretty well going into the next year. Training is, is key. We have the policies now in place. Now we need to continue to do our training and roll call to ensure everyone is aware of all the policies and understand how they in fact work. We're going to increase our investigative training for our supervisors. Again, we want to increase the internal investigations that we do have. We do have a lot of investigation when it involves Title Nines, things of that nature. And we have criminal investigations that we do have to review to ensure they're correct for clearly reported and disciplinary investigations. So that we can have that in place. Disciplinary, we're working on that now to ensure we have a policy in place, but we also have to work with it. The, the collective bargaining agreement, within the collective bargaining agreement, to ensure we come to some the collective bargaining agreement within the collective bargaining agreement to ensure we come to some something we can really all agree on. Then going to, we're going to increase our crime prevention initiatives. We're going to try to put a silent witness program together. That'll be our text messaging type of situation where we'll be able to get messages from anonymous tips and things of that nature so that we can move forward with that. We're going to create online electronic registration. A lot of things, students reading campus now are electronic. So we want to make sure we have that information in case anything should happen. And again, we want to create the self-exchange location. That's in our new service area down here at the police station here. Again, we're going to implement the computer aided dispatch and the report management software. That's all in place. We're testing it now. Hopefully it will be fully functional within the next couple of weeks. Again, we're upgrading our electronic access control, our cameras and our panic buttons. And also we'll be updating those blue light phones that where they actually will have a blue light on them. Right now, the lights are different colors, but I think folks do recognize what they are. You see on our other campuses, we do have them. They do are functional. They just don't have the blue light. That pretty much sums up my presentation. If you have any questions. Ready to answer any question you may have.
Anyone have any questions for Chief Welch? All right. Thank you, Chief Welch. Thank you so much. Really appreciate you and all the hard work that you're doing, particularly in the last few months during COVID. So thank you so much. All right. So we are going to go into closed session. The original plan was we'd take a break and then we'd come back and go into closed session. I'm just going to have the motion to go into closed session. We'll take a break. And then when we open up, you should have a new email. It's actually in the agenda. And but I will make sure that Bonnie resends it to everyone right now. So it'll be at the top of your email, a new link for the closed session. So it is twelve twenty, almost twelve thirty. We have a fair amount to cover in the closed session, so I'm going to ask that we take only fifteen minutes. Get yourself something to eat, do whatever.
Students who we know are going to be successful. And we need to own the fact if we admit students, we are saying they should be successful. And so we have to have the support services in place to guarantee these students are successful. Does that help trustee Snyder? I know it was.
Fair bit.
No, that's helpful. I mean, I'm just trying to understand what the root cause of this is. It sounds like curriculum is part of. Part of it, I wonder whether part of it is admitting students in the program who aren't prepared.
Undoubtedly.
And or don't have the support. I mean, kind of have to understand what the root problem is that's leading to the failure to figure out how to fix it.
And root causes is what we do. So we do root cause analysis to figure out how. So in response to standard twenty-four, which is educational outcomes, which is really what you're asking about. We provided a root, a very extensive root cause analysis to ACPE, an action plan to address the root cause analysis. They were very pleased with the root cause analysis. However, that's being rolled out now. So for instance, our students are less professional than other students in colleges in Illinois. We had heard that from preceptors who precept our students on experiential education courses. And so we have a professionalism class to address that. We see that our naplex, so this year, for the first year ever, we have one one credit professionalism class. I as dean, I'm one of the associate deans. We have noted that our students can pass pharmacy dosage forms without being competent in calculations. So we separated calculations out as a standalone course. We did a number of things. These are just examples. And we presented these things to ACPE and and I think they were very, very pleased. So we've done a lot of the work to educational outcomes. We have to assess the new curriculum and make sure it's actually meeting needs.
Given that it's a multi-year, you know, fairly extended course of studies, when would you expect to start seeing improvements in the pass rates? If the curriculum reforms are working?
So we did some other things as well. And so there's a national company that a lot of colleges use called RX Prep. It provides modules throughout the year to orient students to the licensure exam and specific, gives them practice with specific areas. Last year was the first year we incorporated that into our curriculum. We also, as I mentioned, incorporated a module for experiential education that prepares students, a very intense six-week module before graduation. So we need to see, the curriculum isn't going to show results for years. So we need to support the students we have within our curriculum. Because we're rolling out that curriculum one year at a time as we roll the other one out. So I'm hopeful that we see improvements based on the efforts we made alone last year. We can't be at fifty percent this year.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you, Dean. Appreciate it. Okay, Dr. Rontree, who's next?
You have Dr. Tyra Ousley. She's the interim dean for the College of Health Sciences, and she's going to discuss our nursing program.
Right, Dr. Tyra Ousley, thank, I'm saying, Dr. Ousley, thank you. You may proceed.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update regarding our nursing program. Greetings. My name is Dr. Tyra Ousley. I am the chairperson for nursing as well as the acting dean for the College of Health Sciences. I'm here to provide you an update regarding the nursing plan to improve our NCLEX pass rate that was submitted and approved by the Illinois Board of Nursing in July of 2020 and approved by our accrediting body Accreditation Commission for Education and Nursing. Just to provide a context for this meeting and update, I will provide you the three-year data concerning our pass rates. In year 2017, we had a pass rate of eighty-two percent. Twenty eighteen, we had a pass rate of sixty-two percent. And twenty nineteen, we had a pass rate of forty-two percent. Hence, in twenty eighteen, the program was put on warning by the Illinois Board of Nursing. The program was also put on probation in twenty nineteen due to NCLEX pass rates that was below passing average. We submitted a plan to the Illinois Board of Nursing and it was approved in July of twenty twenty. In twenty nineteen, a written substantial plan was submitted to the nursing accredited body, the Accreditation for Commission for Education and Nursing in March of twenty twenty, and this report was approved for continuous accreditation in July of twenty twenty. Just to share with you the plan in which we are working towards to improve our NCLEX pass rate. We have a new curriculum that was adopted in twenty sixteen. Based on that new curriculum, the faculty that we currently have, due to financial existency, are not the faculty that implemented this new curriculum. So we're currently working through the curriculum. Hence, we had a consultation with an outside nurse consultant who assisted us with creating a nurse curriculum map, which actually helps to use the blueprint from NCLEX to our curriculum to ensure those important items are covered. Like pharmacy, we are also measured by our first time test takers. In addition to some of the plans that we have implemented, we revised our admission criteria where students are required to have a three-point O in all biological sciences. We implemented a face-to-face interview. We also increased the cumulative score for successfully passing a nursing course from seventy-four percent to seventy-eight percent. And this was implemented as recent as fall of twenty nineteen. We reduced our clinical practical comes for our students from a ratio of one to eight to one to six for more hands-on experience when they're in clinical areas. We also implemented a remediation plan, which is tied to progression from nursing course to nursing course. If students do not complete the remediation plan, then the progression in the program will be halted. We went from admitting once a year to admitting twice a year. Upon reviewing, we understood that most of our students are course takers. Meaning they may have taken one of two courses to be able to apply for the program. But the actual program is fifteen credits, five classes. And we recognized that the students and the populations that we serve, it was maybe overwhelming where you're trying to balance five classes at a time. So we've implemented where students will take two classes in eight-week blocks. They have one sixteen-hour, one-credit-hour course, which I like to call study hall, but we call it seminar. And then they have two additional eight-week courses in the latter part of the semester. This was just implemented in spring of twenty twenty. And we were happy to report that we were able to retain ninety-eight percent of the students. The other two students were withdrawn from the program due to health issues related to COVID. We also have standardized testing, which is required for each nursing course. This allows us to measure our content and our curriculum based on a standardized test to ensure those items are being met for proficiency. The students in our program receive three NCLEX reviews. These are outside reviewers that come in and the students, one, receive it at the end of their first nursing career, nursing program. Then they receive one in their last semester of their nursing program. And then they receive the last one at the end of successfully completing the program. This allows them to have more exposure to standardized testing, which is similar to the NCLEX questions in which they will see. In addition to that, we've had faculty development for our faculty through our nursing outside consultant, which took place in fall of twenty nineteen and spring of twenty twenty with Kaplan review focusing in on item writing, which are similar to case study, itemized type NCLEX questions. In addition to that, for students who have yet to take their NCLEX, they're invited to the campus to sit in on the NCLEX reviews to ensure that they have a refresher regarding the content. Lastly, I would like to say that we have clinical affiliations across the Chicagoland area, which includes the Chicago Public Schools, the Cook County Health System, Northwestern Hospital, Lurie's Children's Hospital, University of Chicago and St. Francis Health System.
Hello. Hi. Hi. How are you in it?
Oh, am I? Uh-oh. Did I interrupt someone?
Everybody just needs to be on mute if you're not speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Dr. Ousley. You're fine.
Okay, okay. And lastly, I would just like to state that we're confident, based on these new strategies that have been implemented, that we will get off of probation. And just to share a quick highlight, we just received our second quarter results. And we had some students that actually finished the program several years ago, which were invited just this past December. And I'm happy to report that they were successful in passing their NCLEX. So we're here to support our students. One of the things I would like to mention is that, you know, our program puts out one of the the major minority, most minority nurses in our communities. So when patients in our community are looking at a healthcare provider, they're looking at someone who looks like them. And that's all I have to share at this moment.
Okay, are there any questions for Dr. Ousley? All right.
Dr. Roundtree, did you want to add anything?
I just wanted to point out, and as I think all of the board members heard, some of these changes are related to curriculum and we don't expect to see major impact in in a year or so because of curriculum, you have to teach out one to bring one in. But I do think that both deans have done a great job of identifying, as trustee Snyder mentioned, some of the root causes and implemented supports for those classes that are still working out of the old curriculum. So I believe that they will both be very successful in their endeavors.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dean Provost Rontree, and thank you, Dean Ousley and Dr. Fett.
Thank you for having us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work.
Yeah, we appreciate it. All right, next is a presentation by our internal auditor, Natalie Covelo on the fiscal nineteen external audit. So Natalie, if you are present, go ahead. You may proceed.
All right, just give me one moment to share my screen. All right. Do you see the PowerPoint up?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, great. Good afternoon, trustees, President Scott. I'm pleased to present on the fiscal year twenty nineteen external audit. My name is Natalie Crespo-Covelo. I am the chief internal auditor at the university. I hope this presentation provides some insight into the Illinois State Government audits as well as offers updates related to CSU's own audit. I'll be providing a bit of background on legislation related to our audits, what the process looks like at CSU. And finally, I'll touch on the fiscal year twenty nineteen's findings and updates to progress on those. Under the Illinois State Auditing Act, the Office of the Auditor General, or OAG, is required to audit public funds to report to the General Assembly and to the governor. The OAG may appoint special assistant CPA firms to conduct the work. Roth and Company, formerly ECRTs, was selected as our auditors. They work under our OAG-appointed audit manager. Special assistants are generally contracted for a six-year term, and our current auditors are in their fifth year. The OAG was established under the legislature. Those who grant funds and set program goals review expenditures and results through the audit process. And this way, CSU is held accountable to taxpayers through their elected representatives. The Legislative Audit Commission was created to review all the audits conducted by the OAG and monitors corrective actions. It consists of twelve legislators. Annually, the LAC reviews CSU's audit and inquires on the university's progress. Based on that review, they may elect to hold a hearing in which CSU officials provide testimony regarding the findings and corrective actions. They can also make recommendations to the General Assembly for corrective legislation or other measures. The audit process actually includes three types of audits at CSU. Our financial statements are audited on their fair presentation. Our compliance audit includes both a single audit, the review of federal grant dollars, as well as a review of compliance to state mandates. Periodically, the OAG will perform an in-depth information systems review. The last was conducted in fiscal year twenty seventeen, and the university is currently undergoing another for fiscal year twenty twenty. The findings will be incorporated into the compliance report. Also, effective January twenty nineteen, the audit now includes review of our cybersecurity program and practices. Looking at the breadth of the audit process, both the financial and compliance start with preliminary work and requests in about April. The financial usually wraps up in about October and the compliance in the January, February timeframe. Corrective action plans, or CAPS, are documented internally for the conclusion of the audits when findings become finalized. But CAP implementations are ongoing throughout the year. We've instituted a process to receive progress updates every other month until management reports that they are complete. The LAC normally will review our reports late in the fall. Staff from more than ten departments are directly involved in providing hundreds of documents, interviews, observations, and other information as necessary. And this doesn't include other external audits. President Scott has also been heavily involved in the process, both in attending various update meetings with the auditors and in monitoring progress in corrective actions. There are many users of our audit reports. They are reviewed by the Legislative Audit Commission. CSU board and management can use the report as a monitoring tool. Federal and private granters review the reports and will often inquire about relevant findings and question costs that the auditors report. They may also consider the report and general internal controls of our organization in future awards. Our other stakeholders, our many other stakeholders can also use the report. They are all publicly available. Potential business or community partners, candidates for employment, and so on. For fiscal year nineteen, we had a total of ten findings, up from nine the year before, six of which were repeated issues, and I will get into those in a minute. While we don't, looking at a comparison to other Illinois public universities, so we don't always recommend focusing only on the number of findings, but this does provide a benchmark. As you can see, CSU appears to be in that mid-range. And I will just say that there is a phenomenal network of chief auditors for the Illinois public universities that I've been invited into. Periodically, we meet and discuss new areas that external auditors are reviewing, significant audit findings, and ways that other universities are approaching resolving those. This next graphic shows how many times a finding has been reported over the past four years. So the purple represents, let me just get my pointer here. The purple represents first-time findings, with the green representing those reported for the third, fourth, fifth plus time. In 2019, we did see an increase in first-time findings. However, the findings repeated multiple years remain an issue. I will caveat that repeat findings may not be the same exact issue, but if they're closely related, say, they have to do with the same grant, the auditors may categorize it as a repeat. Another breakdown of our findings shows that we had one financial finding for federal non-compliance and six state non-compliance findings. And although all the deficiencies were reported as significant enough to include in the main report, they're unlikely to have a material impact. And there is one finding with questioned costs associated. I'd just like to take a moment to discuss how internal audit uses the audit results. Our audit plan is based on, in part, the audit prioritization. So audit prioritization is made up of several factors, including our linkage to our enterprise risk assessment, financial significance, compliance risk, fraud risk. And here we've got internal control and historical audit results that make up nearly twenty percent of the risk score. So that areas with a history of issues will have a higher prioritization score. We also see a connection to our university's enterprise-level risk assessment. So areas noted by management as being higher risk indeed had related issues in our audits, namely procurement and infrastructure. Some of the themes came through directly, such as non-compliance to the state's procurement code, but others were more indirect, such as a finding related to subsidies among accounting funds. So when a critical look was taken, part of the cause related to athletics, part of the cause related to decentralized and unconstrained purchasing in the athletics department. While internal audit climbs its own way out of repeat audit findings, we're looking for ways to assist management by providing timely, focused, and agile audit assurance services. Now I'll briefly go through each of the findings and cap progress. I won't get into the weeds here, but I did include a brief summarization about the finding, who the process owner is, the number of times the finding was reported, progress update, and if it's expected to repeat or not. Additionally, at the bottom, the graphic represents the completion percentage reported. So the first finding related to accounting classifications, responsibilities have been delineated and additional reviews are in progress. So this is not expected to repeat. Just move on to the next finding. CSU hadn't reported changes in senior management timely, but process flow has since been corrected. It's not expected to repeat. Next finding related to change in student enrollment that wasn't reported timely. This is one that's indirectly related to our IT infrastructure risk noted during our enterprise risk assessment. It's a manual process, and extra precautions are being taken, but enrollment is looking for ways to optimize its technology and automating at least part of that process. The next finding relates to conference expenses. We are materials improperly promoted the conference as Department of Education. This is the finding that has questioned costs. However, the Director of the Office of Grants and Research Administration is confident that the DOE will be satisfied. Furthermore, he's now reviewing all conference-related materials going forward. The next finding, this is one that's been reported four times the past four years. So this is related to our TRIO grant. Students can be in a program for years, but eligibility is only determined at the onset. So once eligibility is submitted, it cannot be changed. The process for all new students has been completely revamped. However, this issue stems from a previous year, and because of this, has potential to repeat. The next finding, the auditors did find quite a few issues with our procurement compliance. And this is a finding repeated several times. A new director of purchasing has, just in the past few weeks, been on-boarded. And purchasing has reiterated requirements to fiscal officers. I'll just note here that internal audit is also currently conducting a review into internal controls within the procurement process. The next relates to subsidies between accounting entities. The main sources are athletics department, and they have begun a critical review of their activities. Expenditures will be scrutinized and new revenues explored. There's potential for this to repeat for the next year. The next relates to internal audit, and we've had several major findings repeated five times. And we've been addressing each of these issues over the past year, not expected to repeat. The next finding relates to the process for new employees in retaining IRS-mandated employment verification forms has been addressed. HR is now focused on longer-term employees who had incomplete files. And finally, the last finding related to system access to our Banner ERP system. Access rights were appropriately reviewed periodically over 2020. And the IT division is addressing roles-based access. This is clearly a tie-in to one of our top identified risks related to infrastructure. And that concludes my report. I hope it provided some background and to CSU's external audit progress and some insights into how we respond. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Natalie. Here's one thing I wanted to emphasize. You know, I asked our internal auditor to review the external audit and provide the board with some insight into how, what weaknesses were noted in our prior external audit. And I thought it was important for the board to hear where our external audit team saw weaknesses in our controls and our processes. So hopefully, the board has that insight. Natalie has been very helpful to the campus as we tried to manage challenges and obstacles that relate to our controls and risk. Here. Thank you, Natalie. Kim, did it?
No.
What happened to everybody? Sorry, I had to step away for two seconds.
Oh, no.
It looks like it's just you.
Looks like everybody's here.
Oh, is it? All right.
Yeah, they're on mute. Okay.
Well, I'm on a new everyone screen, and I can only see Kim and Zalwanikov. But are we all set?
Yes.
Yeah. It's true. I don't see you anymore, Chair.
Is your camera on? My camera is off, but that's okay.
Okay. Well, see, now if you turn your camera on, I'll see you.
Is Natalie, is Natalie, sorry, I had to step away for a minute. Is Natalie coming back? Is she done? What are we, where are we?
She finished.
Okay. All right, there's Natalie. Hi, hello to everybody. What next was the compliance presentation, but are they, they're not here, and they're probably not scheduled for.
That's correct. So I just sent an email to Heidi and Derek to see if they could hop on maybe at 3:45. Will that, if they're able, will that work for the group?
Well, yeah, sooner. They're the last presentation.
They are.
So I would opt for, yeah, I would opt for sooner rather than later. So if they can come, I would say 3:45 is fine. They can come then. That'd be great.
Oh. Okay, I am waiting to hear back.
Okay, well, then we will just, if everybody can just sit tight and put your mute. And until we come back, we'll let you know as soon as we hear from them when they're started.
So I just heard back from Moray, and they can join us at four. We initially had them scheduled at 4:10.
All right, then we will, it's 3:30, we'll reconvene at four. And if you sign out, you can sign back in using this link. If you want to just keep it open and just come back on at four, that'd be great. I hope all trustees have heard that, and we will be back at four. Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Stephanie, are you on here?
Wait, Z, sorry, I had to run to the restroom. What do we, what did you?
I don't, I don't remember. I didn't hear it either. I'm just glad I took another call.
We're sorry, we're four o'clock. The Moray was scheduled for 4:10, and so they can't get on until four. So Natalie finished, so we're coming back at four.
Okay, okay.
Okay, sorry, we tried to do sooner, but not much can do.
All right.
Lesson learned. Next time, tell them a half an hour before. So in case we actually have, you know, we speed up like this. So four o'clock, everybody.
Okay.
All right. Okay, all right.
I'm sorry, I had to step away for a second. What's happening?
Natalie finished, and the next presentation was us on the compliance program by Moray, their outside consultant support, and Stephanie. They, that's not scheduled to start till 4:10. We reached out to them, they can't start until, but they're going to come on a little bit early, so it's not till four, though. So we're breaking until four.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks, Mark.
You bet.
You bet.
Hello Chair Zop.
President Scott, this is Heidi.
No, this is Bonnie. I was just letting the Chair know that Erica and you were on.
Oh, okay.
Stephanie is having, okay, Stephanie is having internet problems. She'll join shortly.
Oh, okay. Thanks so much, Bonnie.
Sure.
And Bonnie, this is audio only? No one is on camera? Is that correct?
No, they'll be on camera.
Oh, okay. So when I-
And I can, who's going to do the presenting? So I can share the screen with that person. I can give the screen to that person.
You can send it to Bonnie. This is Erica Holloway.
Yes. So I'll share the, I'll share you the screen with you, make you the presenter.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Bonnie, while everyone's waiting, do you, what do I click to show my screen? Do you have, can you talk me through it?
Yes, when you get on, at the top, it'll be shared screen, and you just share your screen there.
Okay.
So I'll make you the presenter now.
Okay, yeah, let me see if we can, if we can test it out while we're rating on everyone, that'd be fine.
Okay. Okay, you're the presenter.
Okay, so I can only, I can't choose which screen I want to share, or I can screen and monitor too, okay? Can you see my screen now, Bonnie?
Yes.
Okay.
So you're sharing it now.
Okay, what do you, I see it too, Erica.
Okay, great. Are you guys just seeing the presentation right now, or are you seeing both screens?
I-
I see one screen.
Same.
All right, great. Thank you.
And so then I click myself, if I click to show my camera, ah, now I see, aha.
Yeah, you have to click on the camera. If it's blue, then you're off. If it's green, then you're on.
Okay. I see. Everybody's joining, got it.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks. I think we've, I think we got it.
I think so, okay.
Oh, hi Stephanie.
Hi. My apologies, my internet after working all day decided just to take a break too. But I'm, I'm back. Have you, did you all introduce yourself, Heidi, and, okay, all right.
We're just, we're waiting for the Chair to join. She hasn't joined yet.
Oh, good. See, I'm here, I am thinking I'm-
Okay, we are back. And Maurey is with us. Hi Heidi, hi Erica. I'll turn it over to Stephanie, Heidi, and Erica to give us an update on the ethics and compliance.
I will be brief because we have a fabulous presentation put together by Heidi and Erica. But we have been working with Maurey Global for over a year now on a few different projects. One is really trying to develop a robust compliance program for the university, and developing a code of conduct. So we have had excellent partners in Maurey, and they've led us through this process, which has involved the entire campus. But I will allow Heidi and Erica to introduce themselves, and I turn it over to them. Thank you.
Great, thanks Stephanie. Hi, everybody. I'm Heidi Rudolph with Maurey Global, and I'm joined by Erica Holloway, my associate. The two of us have been working together, as Stephanie said, for, for the last year or so. And we're here today to talk to you about the Code of Conduct and the policy project. We're gonna, we'll also touch on a few other, I think, events and surveys that have been going on that we weren't personally ourselves involved in, but have helped to inform and intersect with the project that we have here at hand. Just by a little bit of background, Maurey Global, we specialize in legal and compliance management. So this is our, our niche expertise, and are happy to hear, be here with all of you today. So we're going to just, I'm gonna first just do a couple of slides, just to kind of orient you to the program itself. A little bit of background by that meaning kind of why we're here. What are these various data points, both at the university as well as externally, that inform us and guide us? We'll go into the projects themselves, and the timeline, and last, we'll end it today with, we have an expectation for the board that we'd like to share with you and get your reaction to. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. So, again, kind of, the, over the past year, CSU has looked at ethics, culture, conduct, policies, kind of across the university with a variety of vehicles for that assessment. You see those here on the slide. We'll talk about each of those in a little bit more detail. But to net them all out together, the results highlight a conduct gap, that there's limited kind of overarching behavioral guidance, and there are not expectations for consequences. Again, see, there's been an ethics survey, institutional policy review that we were involved in, workplace culture survey, the policy and code project kickoff, and then most recently too, with internal audit, risk assessment. So we'll be touching on all of those in a little bit of detail as we go through the next slides. Let's go to the next one. Okay, so the project and, at hand, so the, the project that, that Erica and I specifically have been working with Stephanie and the team on is creating a refreshed code of conduct, policy repository, and a policy management program. You may be familiar with the current code of excellence. It is, it's on posters, it's on the website, it's something that you may have seen. So that's why we refer to this as a refreshed code of conduct, because it isn't as if the university had nothing. I am going to pause just for a moment here, if, do you want to entertain questions along the way or comments? Or would you like me to keep going? I'm not sure of your, of your preferred format. Stephanie or-
Heidi, we've got a great group, and so they're pretty good about flagging attention when, when they have a question. So I think along the way would be great.
Okay, all right, fantastic. If I start to see you talk, got it. That will be perfect. So the, the code of conduct, as we note here on the slide, it's more than just a piece of paper hanging on the wall. And that's what we're really working on. We're really working on a code that is much more alive than that. It's the code that we have in draft at this point. It is, it uses the code of excellence as a start, but there really needs to be a whole kind of program around the code. The policy approach, the policy repository and management are part of an overall code and compliance program, and really work together with the code of conduct. So we're going to be talking more about that. But policies need to be re-centralized, and we need a common repository. We need to have a, it needs to be accessible. People cannot find policies that they're looking for, or unfortunately too, they can find multiple versions of policies externally as well. We need policy development guidance and oversight, and we also really need to clean up and get those outdated policies off of websites and off of just external ability to find those. Erica has become quite the internet searcher and has been able to find numerous, numerous policies externally. She's the policy sleuth. Okay, let's move on now to a little bit more background about, again, kind of what gets us to where we're going here today. So compliance programs themselves, some of you may be familiar with them, but we look at really five main elements to effective compliance programs. Tone and messaging being critical, risk assessments, standards and controls, training and oversight. The code project and the policies were really addressing the tone, the standards and controls, and the training. Another thing to draw your attention to on this slide is the spectrum of compliance programs. We have not, or, and how you would, where you would put Chicago State. We have not done a full compliance program assessment, but in large part, having to do even with turnover and ownership, I would, I would put us in the, in the unstructured and moving towards emerging, and that's what we're really working on. We're working to move towards more of an emerging program with those five elements being better covered. We like to think of the, the code as kind of this overarching statement and umbrella, and everything supports underneath it. So for example, the code itself, we like to see codes that contain language and actions that I call them somewhat future-proof. Policies might change because of regulations or laws, but the code itself, we're looking for values and principles that can sustain over time. And I'm sorry, was somebody trying to speak and I was talking over you? Okay, sorry about that. Okay, I'm sorry, let's go ahead and go on to the next slide. So in thinking too about the, the CSU initiatives, the DOJ that I haven't mentioned previously, and internal audit, we have results from each of these, as well as the DOJ requirements that guide us in how we look at a compliance program and how we look at a code of conduct. Again, all of us, all of this leading towards this refreshed code and the policy management and policy repository. So with the internal audit, in working with Natalie, she looked at the, the risks for kind of group validation. She helped us with thinking about hard controls, soft controls, et cetera. And the code of conduct is one of our best examples of controls in working with kind of this overall finding that she has, which we'll get to in a, in a couple more slides here. Let's move on to the next one, where we talk a little bit about the ethics survey that was conducted a little over a year ago. And Stephanie might be able to provide us a little bit more context on this survey. Again, it went to all full-time employees. 211 people responded, which is a pretty good response. But you can see the findings here about the ethical culture, and these are not great numbers. Stephanie, do you want to talk a little bit about the survey?
Sure. It was prompted at the request of President Scott. We were coming in, you know, after there had been a lot of turnover in leadership at the university, and wanted to get a read or a sense of how people felt about the culture of the university. We wanted to promote the ability for people to feel comfortable reporting things, and not a culture that would hide things away or not deal with things. And, and so this was one, a, a first step towards that, to try to get a sense of, of where we were. As Heidi says, the numbers aren't spectacular, but there are, I think, some, some positives in there as well. And I, a lot of the comments that we received were, yeah, this is how I used to feel about CSU, but I see that things are changing. So, but this, are, the, the, the survey was based on one that was developed by the Illinois Ethics Commission.
I think this serves as a good baseline too, and ideally you can run it again in a year or so, and I, I would expect you'd see improvement. Over the course of our time in working with the university, we have been previously on campus a lot, subsequently some Zoom calls. And there's, there's definitely a feeling of change afoot, and I, I'm sure I'm not telling you anything that you don't already know. But there's, in the work that we're doing, and the people that we have consulted along the way with respect to the, the code itself and the policies, there's definitely enthusiasm for chain and change. And there's, and for this culture, there, there've been a lot of really, really positive interactions and feedback. So I, I myself, I'm really hopeful that these, that these numbers will be improving in the future. But again, it's a good baseline. You can kind of only go up, which is nice. The next slide, Erica, this, this has just a few quotes from the open-ended aspects of the survey of, you know, what, what would help them? What, if anything, could further assist you? So we see communication, shared governance, clearly defined policies. These are things too that we have heard in our time on campus and from, from a wide range of stakeholders. All right, and then next, we won't go into all these details, but this is an excerpt from, from Natalie's risk assessment. And the, the risk specifically identified as organizational change management, which she explains to us is, you know, is really culture and how people feel in terms of behaving ethically through all this change, et cetera. And as you see, the, the hard controls, the code, the codes of ethic or conduct are one of your- And as you see, the the hard controls, the code, the codes of ethic or conduct are one of your kind of your means of remediating this sort of a finding, other policies, rules, defined expectations. I use that word rules maybe too, too flippantly. There is a reaction to, as you might imagine, to have, have a code or policies that sound too punitive. We're really trying to strike this balance between creating expectations and a culture of doing the right thing. And not having to have every single rule written out. That is not what this is trying to do. So if I have, I probably haven't described that well previously, that the code itself, we're really trying to set this standard for conduct and behavior that works for CSU. And incorporates CSU values. And we'll, we'll get into some of those specifics in a bit. But then policies and procedures can roll up underneath it. And if you have, let's take a simple example of something financial, something in procurement, or even, even how checks are written. Obviously, you need strong procedures for your financial management. But you can have part of your code be expectations for ethical behavior. If you see something that you think is wrong or doesn't feel right in your gut, you should be able to speak up, right? That, that's the kind of culture we're trying to foster through this as an overall program. And in looking again at Natalie's findings here with the organizational change management. That stood out to her that, that the code and the associated programming we're talking about should help in addressing this. All right. Another, another data point and why we're looking at all of this and need to have this in place too, is the DOJ guidance. Sure, some of you, you're familiar with the federal sentencing guidelines, elements of an effective compliance program. And also a code of conduct being required. So the current code of excellence, I mean, you can check a box. But we want to have a more, a more current and more alive code, which is what we're working on. Currently, you're in compliance, you have a code. But we want to take that to the next step and become more of an established program versus the more unstructured end of the spectrum from our prior slide. Little bit of just external benchmarking in thinking, in looking at codes and policy programs. Just, just to give you some confidence or knowledge of what other organizations do. And this is across a wide range of organizations that is not just higher ed, nor is it just corporate. It is a combination. Eighty percent have codes. Over, over 75% do some kind of annual training. Seventy two percent train their boards, we'll talk about that later. And then also you see the, the data points across the bottom regarding policy management. Sorry, the joys of working at home. I have a dog who's now going to try to join the meeting, so I'll try to make sure she doesn't. Okay. Lastly, before we go into the details about the code and the policies, want to talk about compliance responsibility. We, we've been involved, Erica and I have been working with the university since President Scott's transition. And in the administration group, we looked at this, at the area of compliance responsibility at a high level. And given CSU's size and budget. There's not going to be a giant compliance department that handles everything compliance. This has to be more of a shared responsibility. You can have compliance oversight and leadership, but you have to have department leaders involved. They have to be responsible for their particular subject matters. And this is an area that accountability there is definitely a gap. There's been progress, but this is going to be an expectation that's going to continue to need to be socialized. We have been working with the leaders throughout the last year. And across the board enthusiasm, it's just, we need to still get them to that point where they do have kind of that full ownership for their subject matters and their role in overall compliance and overall the conduct and tone. All right, I'm going to talk a little bit now about the code itself. Okay, we're going to use the great consultancy word. We want to operationalize the code. But what, what does that mean? We really are trying to bring this to life. This is to help with culture, help with that conduct gap that I described earlier. Again, the code can just be a bunch of words. We could have just copied somebody else's code. That has not been our approach. This is, we have involved a lot of members of the university to enter, so that we have a code that really speaks to the culture of CSU. I have to say the most kind of resounding belief of inclusion in this code talks about community. That CSU is a part of the immediate community. And then the community of Chicago and the region. And the people who have participated and helped and reflected on the code have really underscored that as a value in the university and how it is important to who CSU is and sees itself. That, that's just one example of the kind of principles that we want to have included in the code. The, again, the refreshed part, we want to be sure that we have some articulation of consequences for non-compliance. Those do have to be something that can be agreed upon and executed fairly and consistently. All of this too, I'm going to keep talking about and probably ad nauseam, the need for tone at the top. This can be President Scott, of course, but other leaders and you, the board, can help with championing these messages. And the belief that this code is what we believe for our entire institution, right? It's, it's written largely reads as if it's written to for faculty and staff, but it, it applies to students too. Students, of course, have their own codes of conduct and behavior, but all of this is supposed to work together. One thing to note on here too, and Stephanie mentioned this earlier too, when you, when talked about the survey. People have to feel they can speak up. And that has to either be anonymous or they have to feel that they go to somebody. But it's critical overall to the code of conduct and the, the associated program going forward. Last but not least, with the code, we would recommend that it's reviewed on an annual basis. As I mentioned earlier, the code itself, we don't expect it to change a lot. But you want to do a cross check annually, just to make sure you, you don't have language that's, that is somehow out of date. Or maybe there's something that needs to be added to it. There certainly have been a lot of things over the last few years where universities and their misconduct, as we know, have gotten a lot of attention, a lot of unfortunate publicity. And I think through that too, there have been things that will have impacted codes. And perhaps language or even policies. And an easy example too, would be policies regarding social media change. And then would you have something in your code that talks about communication that might somehow need to be tweaked? But those would be minor tweaks in that annual review. We would also strongly encourage that there be an annual, it doesn't have to be some three hour training, but at least an annual, an annual review by members of the university and an annual attestation saying, once again, I affirm the principles in this code. If I see anything, I will report it, et cetera. Questions about the code? I, I will pause on that. The next slide just tells you a little bit about where it's going to live. But questions or reactions about the code? And we, we have a slide coming up too with the timeline, so we'll be talking about that. But any, any questions? Comments? Everyone loves codes of conduct. Okay, the next slide, just it, it talks about the, the platform for the code. We have an outside vendor called, named Palm Tree.
I just asked, so how does, how does this relate? Is there like a policy or something with respect to academic freedom? And how does this relate if at all to that? Or is this just?
There is. Erica, there is one of the principles is the, the academic freedom, correct?
Yep, that's correct. So it's included as one of the kind of key values or principal statements in the, in the code draft.
And we can, we can flip to that content, just kind of the overview. We have it organized in a, in a table where you can see those jump out.
Okay, can everyone hear me?
We can hear you. It just got smaller on the screen.
Okay. There you go, is that better?
Yeah, there you go.
Great.
So these are the principles. And then there's supporting text and supporting policies in each of the areas. You can see how that's organized.
I'll just take a minute to also pull up the draft of the actual code itself. So again, these, these 12 articulated principles all have supporting text.
I, I can look at it later, I was just curious.
Yep.
Is this something that we have to approve? Or is this something that Stephanie or that, that they can just do? And if so, are you sending it to us?
Well, it, you're not required to approve it, but we wanted you all to, to, to know what we were doing, to have input on that. And I think Heidi does have an ask of, of the board in her presentation, so I won't steal her thunder.
Okay.
I mean, because we clearly can't read this right, the way it is right now. It's like a teeny tiny little print. She's going up and down. Okay. So you can keep going. This is just to show us what it looks like, or?
Yeah, the, the organization of it. And our most recent feedback that we have engaged in, we had two stakeholder groups over the last couple of weeks. Which included faculty and administration. And we, we got some additional feedback from them as well. Some very, very enthusiastic discussions, very good, very good feedback. So this is just, this is a platform where this will live. Palm Tree, this is a dedicated compliance platform. It's great, this is, it's a small company. It's a gentleman in, in the Chicago area, a former compliance person from private practice. And has created this great platform where we'll be able to easily contain as well as maintain the code. All right, let's move on to the policies. And then we will end with the timeline, so you know how this all fits together and kind of what's coming next. And what to expect with the whole operationalizing the code and kind of what that means in terms of timing. With respect to the policy repository and policy management, I'm going to have Erica talk about it. I really think she knows more about CSU's policies and their whereabouts than just about anybody. She's spent a lot of time on this and has quite, quite an inventory. So Erica, I'll let you take it away.
Thanks, Sophie. So the, the first thing that we looked at when it came to policies at CSU. And actually, this was part of our first, our second project to CSU, which was an institutional policy review, was the institutional policy manual. And what we found while there, the policies were current policies and they were up to date. It was kind of a big, heavy book that people drug out at the meetings and dusted off. And they were like, yeah, these are all of our policies. So that told us that while the policies do live online as sort of a PDF. They weren't being, they're not easy to find. They are kind of all over the place on different websites at the, the university. People aren't really using them in any meaningful way, whether it's to develop policies within their area or just research, you know, what, what is our policy on X, Y, or Z? So our first sort of idea was to take that manual and all other policies at CSU and take them from the sort of scattered approach where they live on people's desktops, they might live on one website, but not the other, and put them all into a central repository. So the policies aren't necessarily changing in the institutional policy manual themselves. They're just getting an upgrade on their template and where they live. And that's the same for policies across the university, with the exception of the academic policies. Those aren't in scope right now for this project. So you can see the screenshot here on the right. It looks like pretty much any other SharePoint repository you might be familiar with. And it's reorganized and searchable. One thing to note is that policies that are public facing will be available to everyone in the public, but not all policies will be found here. For example, you don't want any old person going in and looking at like data, at security policies, for example, for the university. So this will be tiered with appropriate access. So the second part of our policy project was to address sort of what I just touched on, which was that when we looked at the institutional policies at CSU, we didn't necessarily find that there were large gaps where policy should be. If anything, we found sort of the opposite, where there was an, an inclination to, to react to something that happened and make policy about it. So there tended to be tons of policies, first things that didn't necessarily need to be. And then we also found that version control is an issue. So conflicting versions of policies were found, perhaps outdated policies or dead links on websites. So in addition to pulling those off and putting them into a central repository, we are also going to help the departments with some policy development guidance. So that would be providing them with a template so that they all know how to capture the relevant information that they need to write a current policy, which would be, you know, who approved it, who reviewed it? Which version this is, et cetera. We'll be providing them with the responsible executive list again, so it's very clear who owns what policy and who needs to review it and when. We also just, we created an easy process flow for them to know. So again, this isn't all just written in like a block of text that they have to memorize by heart. It's something that they should be using actively and referring to. And then maybe the most important part is a policy development checklist. So again, they're going to be going through this checklist to understand, does my finance policy have an effect on an enrollment policy, et cetera, et cetera? So it's kind of helping them with these checks along the way so that they're not creating redundant or inappropriate policies. The last thing I would note is that there is a policy on policies in the institutional policy manual. We're not doing away with that, that's still how you make policies, there's still X, Y, and Z approvals. We're just helping people understand that a little bit better and putting it into a new template. One thing I wanted to touch a little bit on too, is the idea of kind of policy remediation as part of this. So I mentioned, you know, some outdated policies, some redundant policies. Part of that was going to each of the departments and kind of working with them to help identify a priority list and a timeframe for them to start reviewing and updating these policies. Our findings so far have been that some policies are ready, or some departments are ready to roll their sleeves up and get right to it. And they've been very self-driven. This would include athletics, even the very brand new enrollment management VP has been very proactive in the policy review. And then there are some areas, I think, that are looking for a little bit more, they understand that they own the policies, but they might be looking for more substantive help because they, they may not feel sure that they know what exactly is required. Or they may think that they need, you know, Stephanie to review every single policy, when really she only needs to review one policy, for example. So it really does, it has kind of run the spectrum on that, with some being very proactive, having a lot of policies and understanding the requirements and others kind of needing a little bit more help.
Great, thank.
Yeah, so I think that's it on the policies, right Heidi?
Right. Okay, so let's go to the timeline to see where this all stands at this point. So again, as we've discussed, we have this organized in our, and how we're approaching this into, in terms of the code and the, the policy work. You can see with the timeline there that we're heading towards the big yellow star there, which is a November launch for the code itself. Still quite a bit of work to be done to get there. The content itself, I'd say we're really, we're nearing the finalization. But then all of the supporting elements need to be in place for that, for that to occur. The policy project Erica just mentioned, it's, it's kind of mixed in terms of by area where that stands. I think we have found that the new leaders are very receptive to this because in many instances, they had themselves struggled to find policies. And this is where. they had themselves struggled to find policies. And this is where Erica had been able to point them to policies. They are all very interested to review the policies so that, we hope that this timeline that will keep them on track. And we, we really are serving as project managers with that and helping do as much heavy lifting as we can, but we aren't subject matter experts in all of the policy areas. So that's not something that we can write all of the policies for them, but we can help them move this along and get us to the endpoint with this repository and this easy to access and find the policies as well as something that we then communicate as part of the overall program and roll out with the code. We'll want to have that all be kind of tied up in one nice bow for a launch. Okay. Um, let's see, am I missing anything on here? I think that, I think those are the main points. We're, with the code itself and where it lives after the conduct is finalized through the appropriate, appropriate review and, and yours included and President Scott's final review, then it, it does become getting that, getting the website set up, getting that up and running and getting then the, the training in place, the training and attestation for that November launch. Okay. Our ask, I'm going to move on to the ask of you. We, we would like you to participate in that training and attestation and be able to be champions for this endeavor as well. Any kind of, any sort of input or feedback that you have, we obviously would appreciate. That's why we're here today to talk to you about this. But it goes a long way to be able to communicate that the board participates in this as well. We find, we consider that to be a best practice. We're trying our best to work with Stephanie and the team here to, to change the culture, to set these expectations and all of your, your roles and voice, reference to your voices is very, very helpful. We can't make people behave appropriately, but we can do everything that we can to set the standards through the code, through messaging, whether it's posters or email communication. We have a lot of, we have a lot of ideas that have, have worked well with others in terms of the code going forward and how we can continue to socialize this message and set the standard for the conduct that I think that we all want to see across the university. So with that, further questions, comments? Anything that's going down the wrong path that you all would like to see course corrected at all?
I just, I think it'd be great if we could circulate a copy of the draft, just so we could have a look at it in detail as needed.
Sure.
No, I, Heidi, it's Andy. Can I, just one second, President Scott. So first of all, I think the work is impressive and I like the, you know, you're on point and I think the topics are the right topics and the points are the right points. I, I do think, you know, the one thing that I worry about a little bit and, and I, and I understand why you want the board to participate. I do think we need to be thoughtful about the idea of, of culture change here. And whether it's the board or whether it's a group of leaders at the university, I don't think, you know, I think we have to do more than just have the, have the thing roll out. And I know you're not saying that that's all you would do, but you know, these behaviors are deeply ingrained. And so I think we are really going to have to think about, and this is really kind of also for you, President Scott and Stephanie, really be thoughtful about who are your, your on-campus champions? You know, who are the people who are role models for this or who would be excited about being role models for this? And on a department, you know, department, you know, level, because this is a sea change in, in terms of it doesn't, it shouldn't be, but it is in terms of setting expectations for people. And I think the worst thing we could do here is roll this out and not be heavily engaged in making it part of the culture. Because otherwise it just becomes like the policies that you found, Erica, where there's policies upon policies that nobody's really paying attention to, but they said, I had to issue a policy. So I'll throw it in here and I can say check. So, and we don't want that to happen. So I, I think we have to be real and thoughtful, continue to be thoughtful on how, how we embed it. Sorry, see, we're trying to talk.
The only thing I wanted to add is first of all, this, this work, you know, given my background and, and, and the role I played in Illinois in, in, in ethics and compliance, this work is really important. It's fundamental to the culture change that we want to see at Chicago State. So I, you know, we, we put, we put a lot of work into risk management, which is why you heard from the internal auditor, why we have a new internal auditor and why we've gone through the culture, the culture climate exercise. But as Heidi noted, you know, our, you know, our resources are, you know, our resources are limited and, and which raises a concern about when you look at the, when you look at the sentencing guidelines, Heidi, you know, that one of the questions, you know, that will be asked is, is what resources, were sufficient resources devoted to, to the, to the program? And, and you know, you, it, to me, it makes it seem as if, you know, you presented a slide that says there's limited resources to devote to this, which puts us squarely at odds with the sentencing guidelines that say we have to devote significant resources. Now sufficient resources. And I also think that to Andy's question about whether the board needs to approve this or not, the board is ultimately responsible for how we manage risk. And while I don't think there's anything in the, in the regulations that require the board to pass on the code of conduct, the board, if we are, if we are launching a new code of conduct for the university, I think that the board should do something to recognize that it's aware of the risk exercise that went on and that it is, it is engaged in the risk exercise and in some way does approve at least the process or something. We want to make a record. So I'm, so I just, I mean, I don't know how, how that happens, but those are two things I think coming out of this that we need to, 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 to at least have a conversation about and make a recommendation to the board about.
So I agree. I, I do think it's, I would not want to frame it around the risk process because while I know that's how you're thinking about it, I think that's not how you want to present it to people. I think it's way more about the kind of culture we're trying to build that's important for us to have at Chicago State because of the respect we have for the institution, right? So that's, and I think that's how we have to talk about it. I mean, in the long run, it's about risk and compliance, but at the forefront for people getting to engage in it, it's about what kind of institution are we going to, are we going to be? And what kind of culture do we have to have in order to be that kind of institution? So, and so we can do that however you want. We can, you know, say we, we don't have to vote on it, but we're going to get behind it and, and announce that we're going to participate in the training and do that because of that, you know, since we don't, obviously don't want to set a precedent that every time we make a change your compliance policy, the board has to sign off. So you guys figure it out, you know, make a recommendation about how you want to proceed, but that's easy. And I agree with you that we should do that.
Okay.
Other thoughts? Anybody else? All right. Erica and Heidi, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to present and take all the, all the points. Very well said. And like, we've heard so many people talk about culture, shares up about culture and accountability. There was words that we hear over and over again. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to figure out how to exit.
All right. I think we have come to the end of the agenda. Hard to believe. It's been a chock full day. So I think with that then, I will entertain a motion. First of all, thank you, President Scott, for the other board members. President Scott and I had a conversation the other day about timing and the next time we do a retreat, it will not be scheduled for the first day of school. Because as you might imagine, this hasn't, it's been a little bit of a rough timing for her. So, but we weren't paying attention. So, so I want to thank you and your team for good presentations on topics that I think we needed to talk about and hear more about. So I thought it was, the presentations were well done and direct and to the point. And thank you. So thank you for that. I anticipate that it's the first day of school. There's a lot going on and, and we are still in the middle of pandemic. So I anticipate that there will be more news to come. I continue to wish you the best and mostly to stay safe. For my fellow board members and trustees, I wish you all staying safe and well. I think Trustee McDade has her own school starting challenges coming up. You're looking good though. You're, and I don't see a lot more gray, so your colorist must be doing fine.
That's what a good color will do for you.
Exactly. Look at the, all you're seeing is blonde. So, but I wish everyone the best and please continue to stay well and safe. We will see you in September. So thank you.
Thank you.
Oh wait, I got a big emotion. They have a motion to adjourn.
It's a very good day. Thanks, everyone. And I will move to adjourn.
All right. Besides a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Have a good rest of your day. Bye, everyone. Bye.